To Budget Workshop of the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners of August the 5th, 2021. At this time, if everyone please stand, we'll do our invocation and our pledge led by Commissioner White.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for another blessed day on this earth. Lord, we pray for all the sick and the suffering in our community with the virus that's going around. Lord, we pray you give us the wisdom and the strength to do the right thing for the taxpayer. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a justly repented for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, I recognize that we have a full house here. Also, we all realize that COVID has started back through our community, and we have thoughts and prayers for everyone out there. What I would like to do is we're going to try to expedite this a little bit this morning, and that way we can get some folks out of here where you can have some separation. There's a lot of these gentlemen that everybody's had the opportunity to go through and look at, and we'll have some comment here. And those of you that wish to speak, we'll let you speak, but I feel like we have a lot of support here from the board as to, I think, without speaking for everyone, speaking for myself, and I'll let the board speak up, I feel confident to support the numbers, the requests that we have there. And gentlemen, I'll take some input from that. I mean, as we go forward, we'll go down the items, but what I'm saying is, I don't, I'm not pushing you to have to get up here and fight thinking that, you know, you got to fight and scratch for what you're requesting, is what I'm saying. I would like to give you the opportunity, if you would like to speak, to come forward, and we'll start that with the ARC. Yes, ma'am.
He's on our board with the ARC.
Good morning, sir. Welcome.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Campbell. I've been attending the ARC for four and a half years. They do so much more myself and my peers. Since the pandemic, everyone has suffered. I'm asking if we could get additional funding which will help us through the crisis we are experiencing. Thank you for your time.
Good job.
Thank you, sir. Awesome.
Do you have any questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I know you guys don't ask for a lot and typically don't increase that, but how are the revenues coming in right now?
It's not good. We are down, we've lost a lot of people. Hopefully, I don't break up and cry here, but our, we have three openings at our group homes in our day program. People just, we had to go on lockdown because we had so many get it, and then people aren't coming back because they're scared, you know? We're having another recycling of it. Just an example, we just closed out June, and we were 193 in the hole. So we've created a new budget for this year, and it's contingent upon people coming. That's where we get our revenue. But we have a new fundraising coordinator, and we're trying to be creative. I'm going out to pilgrims today to speak to them, and, you know, so we're trying, you know, to get where we need to be.
And the majority of that does come from the local community, is that right?
It does. It does. Our funding, as far as the ARC is concerned, is like 95% government funding, you know? We were fortunate enough in 19 to get the PPP. That pulled us out that year because it was really bad that year. And then in 20, it just kind of progressed because we were, the lives lost and staffing shortages, we're in a complete crisis right now. And this is everybody, I know everybody's in this crisis, but it's not like a commodity on a shelf. You know, we have to have people at work, so, you know, and now we have the mandated increase in rate of pay, and the state doesn't recognize that in the reimbursable rate, so it's an issue.
Yes. Gotcha.
Thank you so much.
I didn't break it, Mike.
Gentlemen, we have, last year was 30,000. This year, the requested amount's 30,000. Have any comments? Thoughts?
I would suggest we add 5,000 to that.
I would be in support of that.
I'd support that.
We have consensus of the board for 35,000 for the ARC, North Florida. Ms. Nina?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Disabled veterans?
We would defer to one of what we have submitted. We would, if you see the request to increase, we would definitely use that.
We have $2,500 was last year, and they have requests for 2,500 this year. Thoughts, gentlemen? I would.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would entertain 3,000.
I'd support that.
I would, too.
Consensus, Ms. Nina? 3,000. Thank you. The Historical Commission.
If you'll give us an extra 100,000, we'll be good to get it. Whatever we take.
Nothing wrong with swinging for the fences.
Next.
Can we go backwards?
We had 16,000 on that last year, and we have requests for 16 this year. Any thoughts, gentlemen?
Just a comment from Mr. Eric. Mr. Eric, is that, I know things have been a little off for you guys as well. I mean, is that sufficient to get you guys? I know everybody wants more, but.
Like everybody else, our revenue's been down. A lot of our revenue comes from dock rental fees, and because of COVID, we had a lot reduction. We've got a lot of building repairs. We've got 115-plus-year-old building, so building repairs are our main expense. So, I mean, 16 will get us by, but if y'all see fit to give us a little bit more, that'd be very helpful.
Can we do another 1,500?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a member of the Historical Commission also, and I know some of the things that occurred there, so we give them another extra 4,000 now, maybe 20,000 now.
We'll take whatever. We appreciate it.
Gentlemen, I have, Commissioner Fleming's asking for extra 4,000.
I'm okay with that. We have consensus.
Ms. Nina, we have consensus at 20,000.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
See y'all next time.
All right. Swanee Valley Foresees, we had 5,000 last year's budget. This year, we have a request for 10,000. Have any thoughts on this?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Patty Stevenson, Fiscal Administrator for Swanee Valley Foresees, and we just want to thank you all for your support. We're kind of struggling with staffing and all that as well. It's been really hard, and having to close classrooms down every time somebody gets a positive case, so I just wanted, do you have any questions for me? I usually go through a whole thing. I put a little flyer at each of your desks.
Yes, ma'am. Wait, any questions? Like I said, we have 5,000 last year and a request for 10,000.
Y'all want to, we can hold or we can, I don't know if I want to go the full 10, maybe 2,500?
So 7,500, you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I mean, we got some federal funding that we really didn't put out to the community in an individual way, so my thought process while we're going down this, just to tell the public that it's a way for us to kind of give back to organizations that give back to everyone. So, I mean, that's my mindset while we're going down this list, but yeah, I would be good with another 2,500.
I have consensus at 7,500 for this budget year.
Thank you so much. We do appreciate it. You all have a good day.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Nina, you got that. Moving right ahead to Swanee Valley, to Neological Society. Ms. Hancock, we have, last year, we had you at 2,000. You have a request for 2,500 this year. I'd be in well support of that, gentlemen.
I'm good with that. Can she put a leash on Mr. Boe?
Yeah, what would that cost? Make a motion.
I would make it 10. So.
Well, I'm good with that, yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay. We, 2,500, Ms. Nina, for the increase. Vivid Visions, we had, last year's budget was 30,000. This year's, the request is the same.
Yes, sir.
I'm good with that, myself.
We have a request for 30,000 this year. We've seen a lot of people under our shelter. We assisted a lot of people from the courthouse. We've done 82 injunctions. So, we're in need of that, and also for our match office.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. I'm in support of the 30 again, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
30, Ms. Nina?
Yes, sir.
Moving ahead to Meridian, we had nothing funded in the '21. This year, we have a request for 3,000.
Actually, we have 60,000 in the budget for Meridian, already in the budget.
Already in the budget, right.
So this is in addition.
This is in addition to. I think that's why we was, because we, last year, we was tight and we stayed.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, just a presentation. Alan Pollan, Senior Vice President of Clinical and Community Services with Meridian Behavior Healthcare, promoting health recovery and well-being of those affected by mental illnesses and substance use disorders. One of the biggest changes since the onset of COVID is we've increased our telehealth services in Swanee County. 722 residents received close to 2,600 telehealth services this year, so that means faster access to treatment. They can be seen in the comfort of their own home. Prescriptions are sent electronically to the pharmacy, reducing travel time, saving parents' time driving around, and where there are other barriers for the people that we serve. We've also been able to acquire tablets for certain people who qualify, and which also comes with a data plan, so they can also use that to access our services. The whole thinking is to stay connected with them, to prevent further costlier services of inpatient care. We've also been able to pull down a grant for Swanee County schools. That's going to allow us to put telehealth machines in each of the schools. We've been working with them, and also tablets as well. And we've also expanded our mobile response team, which allows us to respond 24/7, 365 days a year. We were doing that for the children and the youth, but now we've expanded that to anyone at all, for adults as well. Let's see. And about a third, third and a third for adolescents of those we serve, around 30%. Age group, 18 to 40, 35%, and then the balance of 40, 40 and up. As far as our overall services, the majority for adults are between psychiatric services for medication and counseling, and also we do, and about half of those are at 500 each, services for your citizens, and we serve a total of 1,500 citizens. And as far as the youth, we are about four times higher on the counseling than the medications, and the rationale there is we try to work with the families and the children before we recommend or move to any kind of medications, hoping that the therapy and the skill-building will prevent that from happening. As far as our overall improvement, we have improved functioning and reduction of symptoms, 75% of our adults and 78% of our children. Just for comparison, a benchmark for medical issues with similar levels of impairments is about 60%. Almost through. Our satisfaction surveys are coming in into the 90th percentile, so that's very positive because of the care that we do show for those we serve. So as far as the match goes, Meridian is expected to earn a match of 2.8 million for our whole service coverage area. Swanee County's match is 227,000. That's eight, they're at being 8.1% of the population. So with that, we offset that match with inpatient insurance fees, the use of the health building, county health department building to offset as well. And last year, we, and then county was kind enough to donate 60,000, and this year, we would request a 5% increase to 63,000 for the continuation and addition of the mobile response teams and our Child Action Teams, which is an intensive family strengthening program that we work onsite with the families at their homes to keep them from becoming involved with child welfare and to help them succeed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Now, this time, gentlemen, with just your thoughts on, so just to be clear, Keith, we're at 60,000. It's, we've been doing that for how, I mean, every year, has that increased any or has it stayed at 60 for a number of years or?
It's not increased, I don't know when the last increase was. It's been a few years.
Yeah, I think it's.
I know it was 60 last year, I think it was 60 before.
I think.
But, Mr. Chairman, wasn't this like a automatic renewal, some type of way that it had, was funded some kind of way, something like, as I can remember, I think it was.
We have a study, and we're trying to figure out what square footage costs, try to bump up that match for them, but I don't know where we're at with that with the.
Yeah.
Because we supply the building, too, and they can use that to the state match as a square footage benefit.
I got you.
The value, the value of the square footage.
I got you. Got you, got you.
So I'm saying, my thoughts are, we're doing, as a county, I think we're doing a good bit for these folks, but, you know, I mean, they have a request, so we have to have discussion and see what you gentlemen feel.
Didn't you say, I hear you say you were putting tablets in Swanee County schools?
We are. We're putting telehealth machines and tablets, and that is being funded from a special grant that we pulled together. So that's very helpful for us, and we're just ecstatic to be working with in the schools. We just, my VP just had a meeting with them, with the team over there, and where they're setting up a really nice plan, and we're shooting for four therapists throughout the schools. We are challenged at times hiring therapists. There's an industry-wide shortage, national, state, and local, in our local areas, but we're doing everything we can.
So you actually put somebody in the schools?
Absolutely. Basically embedded with the staff, so as if they are staff with the school, so they can work as a team and, you know, work the referrals, reach out to parents. Parents can come there for sessions, or they can connect with parents for those markers in initial, and at certain times for updates and reassessments.
And just to be clear, that's the Swanee County school system?
Absolutely. Yes, specifically for Swanee County, for those telehealth machines. We did receive for other counties as well, but we do have those dollars.
Okay.
And you're asking for what kind of increase?
5%, which would bring it from 60,000 annual to 63,000.
Just as a reminder, I'll say this after the fact. It has nothing to do with this, but I'll say something. I don't have a problem. I mean.
So let me be clear, we'd be adding $3,000 to this list.
That's right.
In addition to the 60 they've got over there.
And I'll go and say what I was going to say, guys. I think next year, when we come back, just because like Commissioner Land said, we've got some extra stuff here, I think for myself, I would like, because I'm not, nothing against any of you guys, I know you're going to ask for what you can ask for, but I think we're being real generous this year. Maybe next year, have a 20 budget, 21 budget, 22 budget, so we can see, because I just don't know that we'll be in this same position, is what I'm saying. Just. No doubt. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to get back to us. It's what's going to happen.
The well will run dry.
Correct.
And we appreciate anything that you can do, absolutely. And of course, the reassessing of the property may, will also help contribute to the match, that overall match that's required.
I think on this one, I would feel comfortable at 1,500, gentlemen. I'll take your input, but.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I mean, I feel like we do a lot, and I want to do more, but, I mean, we're committed to you every year, so.
I think that's fair. Give everybody else a little bit.
That's, Diana, we very much appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. We're at 1,500 on that one, Ms. Nina? Thank you. Moving ahead to the Chamber, Ms. Hillary Cannon. I'm not going to make you come up here and.
Oh, yes, Smiker.
I mean, I will. I'm going to play you.
This, this one, I got to speak up for. They're close to my heart. I was on the board. I see all the things that they've done. I know a lot of you folks on this board see the things that they do. She had requested 20,000. That's what was last year, but, gentlemen, if you would consider it, I would like to increase the chambers to 25. I would like, just do a lot of things, and they could do more if they had the funds, and it's fighting and scratching every day.
I would support that. I mean, the Chamber is probably, any given day, number one or number two to Mr. Norris' office on businesses coming to, you know, seek out our county and search for data, and, I mean, almost the front door, but I would, I would support that.
Appreciate that. We have consensus at 25, Ms. Nina? Thank you, Ms. Hillary.
You can leave now.
Moving ahead to Hooked on Heroes, I know Commissioner Land's got some comments on this about Mr. Ron. Give us an update on that, and then your thoughts on.
Yeah, he wasn't able to be here today. He has been exposed to someone that has tested positive for COVID, so they're on quarantine. But I would like to see us double that. He takes, I think, the numbers around 700 veterans fishing annually there in Steen Hachy, and they provide the boat, the gas, the lunch, and take a lot of folks that aren't able to either get bait, tackle, the whole kit and caboodle. I don't want to get off on making a presentation for him, but he did call me and he can't come due to the COVID, but it's a little bit about them, and I'd like to see double that myself. This year, you know, like I say, we're sitting on some extra funds, and we didn't do a whole lot for the public individually on CARES, so I understand we can't continue, maybe not continue to do this every year, but this year, we're sitting on a little bit of extra money to give to these organizations to help the less fortunate.
I would be in support of that, and I would like to say also, the Sheriff's Department, they support it wholeheartedly, and cooking and everything, but I've been down there and been able to be, watch them, watch the department in action, and it's just, it's a great thing for the county, so.
Well, can I ask a question before we get to? Ms. Nina, where's this money? Is this coming out of CARES money on this, or?
This is our contingency.
We can take it out of CARES, though. That's kind of what we're discussing here.
Well, the CARES is in general, so it's technically unrestricted.
We can put it back if we choose, so choose.
Go ahead, I didn't, sorry, I was just.
No, that's fine. That's a good, that's a good question. No problem. Do I have consensus at 3,000? I do. Moving ahead to United Way of Swanee Valley, we had zero last year. This year, we have a request for 5,000. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I have sunbreakers with United Way, and we would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know, have we ever funded?
No.
I don't think we have.
Never have. I can't remember.
I would like to do something for them, gentlemen, if, I don't, you know, if you.
Y'all want to do 25?
I have consensus at 25. Have consensus at 2,500, Ms. Nina? Thank you. Police Athletic League, we had 5,000 last year. This year, we have a request for 6,000. I would be in support of that.
I'm good with that.
I would like to speak to that. I was, last year, I think, this is our second year, the first year, I think they didn't qualify, didn't ask, but last year, did ask for the 5,000, which we did so, and the request now is at the 6,000. I agree with that, 6,000.
Have consensus at 6,000?
Yes, sir.
Have consensus, Ms. Nina? Thank you, gentlemen. Welborn Community Association, we didn't have anything funded last year for them. This year, we have a request for 3,000. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Anita Leonard with Welborn Community Association. We have a great need in Welborn. We want to take care of ourselves, but we also wanted to help take care of our county and the surrounding counties. What we would like to do is have another festival called the Cornbread Festival. We need a little bit of help. We need some help with our advertisement. By giving us this money, we can advertise. We have proven to you with our Blueberry Festival that we can bring in revenue. Help us help ourselves. Help us help our community and our county and the surrounding counties. We're not asking for a handout. We're asking you to help us help everyone, and we believe we can do that. We've proven we can do that.
Yes, ma'am.
We've never had a cornbread festival before, but we know we can make a success of it. We've proven it.
I would.
And if you have some extra money, we could use a new roof.
Yes, we could.
I would be in support of the request this morning for 3,000, gentlemen?
I don't have a problem with.
Well, just for conversation, the little, the thing Jimmy Norris does that we done earlier, that's for advertisement, is it not? That's where they request, like the music festival and all of them, the money we give for, I'm sorry, for that.
I'm not sure which one, though. All we talked about so far, I think, is the economic side. We have the tourism side, right?
Mr. Norris, go ahead.
The, yes, through TBC, they can apply for a tourism grant. However, that application process has already been done for this year, so they would not be eligible for next year. So, and they do apply, obviously, and receive.
For our Blueberry Festival, yes.
With the Blueberry Festival, they can certainly apply next year. So those applications have to be submitted, so we can place it for them.
Appropriately. Got you.
That's where I was getting at, you know?
Yes.
Because I knew that was for advertisement.
Yes, sir. But we've never had a Blueberry Festival before, so we could not, I mean, a cornbread festival before, so our hands were tied.
And for the Blueberry Festival next year, put some big fans in there. I might burn up the last night.
It's summertime.
Woo, it's warm out there.
Oh, yeah. This year was better than most.
It was.
I have consensus, gentlemen?
Yeah, he's not here today, but I don't want to pick on him, but if, when you're cooking that cornbread, if you could slide some Happy Pills in Mr. Snowden's pieces, I'd be very appreciative of that. I would have said that, I'd have said that, too, if he was here.
We'll keep that in mind.
We have consensus at 3,000, Ms. Nina? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
All right.
We got a total?
She's hammering on it now.
And I don't mean to sound like a broken record, guys, and I, I just, I know we're all trying to do what's right here, but just know, nothing against these folks, but they're going to come to us next year with that column asking for last year's request. That's why I humbly ask that we have the previous years on this.
Next year, have a three, a two-year.
Yeah, please. Yeah.
You see, we did, we put last year's figures on the request form there, too, so you can see how much they asked for last year.
Yeah, yeah, but I think moving.
We're going to leave three years.
We're going to go three years next year.
We need to go back to 19.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. Just so everyone knows and doesn't get confused.
Get back to normal times.
Right, right. That's all I'm saying.
What's the total, Ms. Nina?
Left?
None of that for those?
139,000. 27,000 more than last year, so pretty low.
139 even?
Yes, sir.
And your new total is, Ms. Nina?
Left?
Yes, ma'am, right now.
327,054.
Woo.
Well, I recommend that that, you know, you increase that based on what Travis, Mr. Land was talking about under CARES for the community. I would suggest that money come out of CARES.
So.
You're saying just add that back to it right now?
Yeah, is there a way to do that? Just transfer that difference out of general into this to cover and use the what was?
There is. And Mr. Chairman, I shared some things with you this morning. Whenever you want me to, I'd like to share some more because it goes back to the cares issue. You tell me when.
I mean, is that something y'all want to do? I'm just asking the question.
I'd like to see that contingency say north of 300,000 for sure, probably closer to four. So if we need, my thoughts were, if we need, you know, not rob, but use some out of general to get the contingency back closer to four in the event a storm comes and we got to buy a bunch of materials, that it's there.
Or pay people to move trees or whatever.
I mean, that's just my thoughts, but whatever y'all.
Well, my thoughts was that you're giving extra money out on this. I know usually it would come out of your contingency, but we're talking about, we give them more because of the cares money, so I think the money should come from cares.
Right, I agree. I agree.
So that's, so that's consensus is we want that to happen, Ms. Nina.
139 taken from the cares balance.
So our contingency stays at where we stopped yesterday?
Yeah, will you give us that number again?
Give the same thing.
466, that's 54.
You gentlemen satisfied with that for contingency?
Yes, sir.
For right now?
I am, yes, sir.
Okay.
But I, there's, I think there were some more.
We're done, we're good, John.
At this time, I think we're good on that part, sir. You're good, Ms. Nina? As far as what we discussed, everybody's clear. Sounds good. At this time, I will, Mr. Harris, we'll pick up where we left off yesterday and keep.
Hammering.
Okay. We had discussed the vacancies and behind tab two is the, you'll see all of my handwritten notes associated with creating that construction crew. You've got two pages of handwritten notes there. Those notes are actually, the vacancies are listed behind tab number 38. If you go to the salary page, the very bottom, you'll see the vacancies that I'm referring to in my notes that are behind tab number two. So I'm essentially taking vacancies that we have and I'm converting those, using those vacancies, not all of them, but most of them, to help create this construction crew. But we were going to need an additional $50,811. Yesterday, I told you that I had, we had determined that we were going to have to go ahead and hire another flagman to work with that crew. We added 37,221. We talked about a $30,000 allocation for a pickup truck. The total came to, with the leased equipment, comes to 209,000 and change. Nina, I can't find my note now.
209,022.
Okay. 209,022. Now, this is a crew to help you get where you want to be on your chip seal roads and your other road improvements that we do. And I'm not talking about bid projects where we take DOT money from scrap and scop, but I'm talking about those local projects that we work on on ourselves. I'm going to ask the board to entertain an option here. That option would be to take more money from your cares act and what we're calling cares act funds, reserves. You've got, and I'm going to make a recommendation here, Zoff. You've got $1.5 million that's built into the budget, it's already in there for the administration building. If you take 600,000, and I'm going to refer back to the comment I made yesterday, our accountant made regarding the use of these unique funds. His suggestion was that we use those for capital improvements, buildings, because their buildings are not recurring expenses. If you were to take $600,000 of your cares act reserve and swap it out for $600,000 worth of that one and a half million that's in there today in the budget, you could take that 600,000 and put it back into your contingency right now. But then you could allocate the 209 from that to pay for this crew. And you could add 200,000 more to your chip seal list. And you would still have another 200,000 above what you're currently showing at, what is it, 300 and something thousand, Nina?
It's 466, that's 54.
So you would increase that by another $200,000 roughly.
Say that one more time.
Yeah, yeah.
Say it one more time.
You lost me about the fourth term.
I'm pretty confused.
Let's start with the one and a half million that's in there for the building.
Okay.
That's already built in the budget.
Right.
Use cares act funds for $600,000 worth of that.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're saying we can't necessarily take it out of the cares act fund, but we can take it out of where this is budget?
Well, you can. You can replace it. Because the one and a half is already built in the budget, what you would do if you take 600,000 and direct it from your cares act money to go toward that one and a half million, you free up 600,000. What are you going to do with it? When you free it up, just add it to your contingency that you have right now. So you're at a million dollars, right?
Okay.
Okay? Now, two things that we discussed that we haven't settled on yesterday. Let's say that you're at a million dollars because you just displaced that using cares act funds. You've got a million dollars sitting there. Use 209 to add this crew. Take 200,000 and add it to your chip seal line on top of what you already have. Okay? So now your contingency is at 600 and something thousand, right? That's the difference that it makes. You end up, you're reducing your cares act reserve by 600,000. The building is still fully funded. You add that 600,000 to your contingency, but then you go ahead and allocate of that, which is going to bring it back down. Takes care of your 209,000 for your crew and adds 200,000 to chip seal. And your contingency is still then at 600 plus.
He's not, it almost sounds like he's saying take it out of the million, but he's not. He's saying, take what you take out of the one point something million, put it in your contingency.
I'm just picking a large item that's in your
Right.
budget that's already funded. You could pick it, you could take it from anywhere. It doesn't have to be from the building, you could take it from anywhere. I'm just saying, use that money to displace what's already built into the budget.
I mean, I don't have a problem, I want to fund the road crew and I want to put more money in the road projects, chip seal projects, guys. I don't know how y'all feel about it, but where it comes from, we just got to figure that out.
I'm with you 100% on roads and, and no disrespect, Mr. Harris, but I'll tell you this board where I'm at with, with all of that. I want to see some roads fixed. I want to see 1.5 million dollars worth of roads fixed, the whole building. I don't, I don't think that, this is where I'm at personally. I'm not ready to build a campus on 112th. Honestly, I'd put a for sale sign on 112th. We're in a great equity position there too. I know that we can't, we're not in the business to buy properties for prop, to turn around and make a profit, but I need some roads fixed. I got, I haven't, I haven't asked for any chip seal roads. I got one road that's on the radar for two years from now. You know, the road that 100 and, I think it's 53rd, that's straight across from 349. Pilgrims uses it, Shenandoah using it, log trucks. It connects 51 to 250. That road needs to be paved. It should have been paved five years ago. It, it takes, Mr. Zilly lives on that road there.
My sister live on that road.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, that's right. You know the road I'm talking about, that, that road. I, I'm just, back to the building, my thought process is, we put that, that whole concept on pause and we fix some roads. We fix some roads in the form of paving them, we fix some roads in the form of chip seal, we hire the crew, we lease, we buy equipment, and we put a million dollars in, into whether it be chip seal or asphalt paving. I know that we can't pave 250 or 137 without scrap and scop, but all these little short, half a mile, three quarter of a mile connector roads, we pave those. And if we don't have the manpower to do the base work, we sub it out to, we put it out for bid for the base, providing the materials. We provide the rock, we provide the asphalt. They just bring the manpower and the equipment, and I say that only because labor and equipment are very difficult to come by in these times if you don't have it and you're trying to get it. So by, by putting some of that base work out to bid and using our crew, we double down on the, on the, on the mileage, if you will, that we reach on road repairs. I mean, I'm a new guy up here, but, and therefore I haven't asked for a lot on roads, but I mentioned Allen Park yesterday. We got, there's a ton of little roads in, in Allen Park that are, that are dirt, that get graded, that are on one acre lots and they all have houses on them. I, I'm just, and this was a previous board's decision, I haven't found anywhere where the board in minutes in previous years, I haven't found anywhere where the board voted on building a building and, and making a campus a mile or so outside the city limits. I'm just not sold on that concept. I think that the people, the people would be more appreciated, appreciative while we have these funds is to fix some roads that we all drive down every single day. I know that's a, I just stepped way out there on a limb, but, I mean, that's where I'm at with it. I, I, I would, I would scrap the 1.5, I would put all that on roads, I would provide material, I would put out what we can't do, I'd put it out to bid, and let's fix some roads. I mean, that's just me. I went off on a little tangent, but y'all know where I'm thinking about that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I would say I beg the difference, that's what we up here felt for discussion.
Yes, sir.
But I would feel comfortable. I went out and looked at, at the site on 112. I think it'd be needed, you know, I think, I think the county would appreciate it on the rearage. Because you have a, a place to, to house county buildings, county functions. I know space is limited at the airport, out in that area. When I, when I first found out about it, I went out with Mr. Harris and we looked at that. And not so much catering, Commissioner Land, to what, what Mr. Harris is trying to implement. But I think if we can do it all, I would appreciate that. As Commissioner White said yesterday, that District Two, all their roads are paved. That's true, but I'm still, still a county commissioner. I have concerns, I have friends and I have family and they ask me about these roads. I tell them it's for lack of funding that these roads are not paved. You know, all my, all my siblings live out in the rural. I think I'm the only one living, I'm the only one living the city limits. My mother lives in, in District Four. I have sisters and brothers in District Four, Three. A lot of family, tons of family. They do ask about the roads and I tell them, I said, well, it's for lack of funding that these roads are not paved, the chip seal. And I totally agree. My sister got called me the other day about that, that same little road. And I say, you come to the meeting and you find out, and then you'll know. And, you know, you know that it ain't, it ain't that easy. Now, I think if, I think I, my preference is I won't be on the board during that time, you know, laid on down the line, but.
What are you talking about?
I think it'd be.
Where are you going? He's saying, where are you going?
Where are you going?
To the house. But I think it'd be appreciative. I think it'd be appreciative, I think this county would appreciate that we don't, Commissioner Land, that we don't put this on the back burner. I think we can, we can all appreciate. I know from, from the time when, when, when I came on this board and I would go out to public work in the little small building that was out there, you just would have to see it, would have, you know, saw what it looked like.
Yeah.
I didn't like it. But things happen, things started changing and I think as we go on this process, you know, it's going to be a whole lot of discussion about it, but I, that's why I say I beg the difference. I, I hope that we will keep this on our radar.
I would, I guess, uncomfortable as it is, it's probably time for me to make some comment and argue with Commissioner Land a little bit, as usual.
I, I don't take it personal. It's all business.
It's a business.
I, number one, I want to leave here today and I want to have some, I want to have a crew, as you said, I want to have some roads. I don't know what that number is. I want to absolutely get that accomplished. Number two is, I was involved as others was here on the approving the purchase of the 112th property. I will say this. I've took many phone calls and a bunch of upset folks thinking that I supported the wrong decision to have the new complex there and continue to, to this day. So I, I'm not going to sit here and say if that's the exact right location for what we need to do in the future. What I would ask you at this time is, I understand your comments, I understand that you say that we, you know, might just, could sell it, but do you have a vision or a thought of where to go with that? Is there a location that you have in mind that would work for what you're doing? Have you thought that far? I guess I need to kind of understand.
Can I chime in a little bit here?
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with where it's at. And I don't have a problem stockpiling rock over there and doing whatever we want to do over there. I don't even care if you build a shop over there. But right now, I don't, I don't support an admin building or a campus out there. I support taking the money and paving the roads. You're going to go out here and ask these taxpayers, we already raised their assessments. And you're going to go out here and build a whole new complex? And you're going to look at people in the eye and say, I raised your taxes while you're doing this? I'm not. Now, I ain't got a problem. Like I said, if you want to shorten your Lime Rock haul up, I agree with Mr. Harris on that, that's probably a good idea. And I don't have a problem with going out there and doing that. And if he wants to build a shop out there and get it away from the airport, I'm okay with that. But right now, I'm not in favor of taking a million and a half dollars out of this budget and doing that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are you done, Mr. White? Mr. Fleming, I respect your knowledge, your history, your, I mean, your wealth of information on where we, where we been and how we got there. And I appreciate that. And I don't disagree that, that the county has a need for new admin or remodel or, I mean, the population's growing, our schools are growing, every facet of Swanee County is growing, including the staff needed to facilitate our daily operations. I think that, that at some point, we're going to need, we're going to have to address the new admin building. My concerns are, Mr. Chairman, is if we focus on 112th as the campus location for, for admin, and we start steering property prays or tax collector, every department in that direction, I know Mr. Harris is going to disagree with me, but you're going to take a lot of, of folks out of downtown Lavoc. Now, I know downtown Lavoc does not have the space to support our growth. I think there's some empty buildings sitting around Swanee County that are for sale or for lease that we could really look at. I mean, we got a shopping center on the south end, all of our commercial growth, I will agree with Mr. Harris on that. I don't think that our admin folks need to be, our county needs to be gobbling up commercial space. That would be better in the private sector. But, but south, we got a, we got a Badcock building, been for sale for years. We got a public shopping center that has lots of vacancies and potentially more to come. I mean, there's, there's, there's areas out there that I think that we could go in the opposite direction of what growth is and get better prices. I agree with Mr. Commissioner White on the stockpiling in the yard. We do need to cut down that, that haul. My thought on that was, is, is if we sold 112th, if, I'm just one guy. If we sold it, we go even further south for that shop and that stockpile in, in the form of around the landfill, maybe not on a landfill site, but we, we, we cut that hauling distance even farther to a more, I don't know where the center of the county is, I would guess it's somewhere around 252, 129, McAlpin, somewhere right there. But we, we go even further south, shortening up our hauling on our trucks and get the stockpile yards away from the airport, which would free up a little more space to maybe park equipment or, or, you know, their building. And maybe we build a shop, a maintenance shop type stuff in the future. But to vacate, to vacate downtown to the extent of a mile, mile and a half outside the city limits, personally, I think that's a bad decision. I think, I think, I think we would be, the county being very close to the city limits of Lavoc, I think is vital to some of the businesses that are here inside the city limits. city limits. I mean, there's no utilities out there when I have water sewer, so we're gonna, we're gonna go well and septic and we're gonna deal with those issues forever on, I mean, you know, pumping out sewage and, and I just, we have a need, I'm not there on that one. In the million five, roads, roads, roads.
Well, I'm gonna tell you where I'm at with it and I'm gonna tell you why. And I've, I'm here for the taxpayer and every taxpayer I've talked to so far ain't on board. I'm just telling you. And it's not that I'm running for reelection and I, you know, that ain't, that has not even crossed my mind. I'm trying to do what I think the people that elected me wanted me to do. And so far, that ain't, that ain't no part of this. I'm gonna tell you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna weigh in, cause I'm hearing all sides of this and, and I don't disagree with any of you and I agree with a lot of you. Um, I think we're in a unique situation where we've got money, we've got the one point something already in the budget. We still have other monies there. I'm hearing you guys saying y'all don't disagree. We're probably gonna have a need for a new building at some point in time.
I don't disagree with that.
If we take it now, it's gonna be harder to get it back. So maybe we just leave it there, don't do anything with it, but use that other money to do roads and things like that. I've just been in this situation where if, if money gets gone, we may find ourselves not being able to, to do anything in the future, whether it be a shop, a building or another location for any other municipality. Just food for thought, I'm just throwing it out there.
My, my, I understand and, and, you know, by all means, when I disagree with anybody.
Or maybe not all of it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean any disrespect to anyone up here when I, when I disagree with you. It's just, just we're here for conversation, make decisions and, and, um, we got a lot of empty, empty office space. I mean, we got downtown above the, above the building apartment. I mean, there's a whole second story completely empty, completely empty. Um, you know, we got offices out there, Mr. Harris' admin building, I mean, Ms. Vickers' his office, last time I was out there, empty. No, 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 no.
Andy's got it.
I don't go out there very often, but the last time I was there, it was empty. Um, I just, I'm not, I'm, I will agree with Mr. White in the form of, I haven't spoken to any taxpayer in my district or any of your other districts that may have called me that is on board with a, with us in today's time, pandemic, increase on fire, increase on garbage, that we're gonna go out there and spend 1.5 million dollars to build a new admin building or even saving it in the budget. I mean, I, to me, to serve the taxpayer, I'm with using that 1.5. And I understand, Commissioner Hale, I truly, I understand how hard it is to get that back in the budget. I get it, I understand it.
That's a lot of money to.
Um, but I want to fix roads with it.
I do too.
I, I want to fix some roads and I want to fix a lot of roads and I want to fix them to the extent where we're not going back and having to refix them five or 10 years from now. I want to fix them, I want to fix them right and I want us all, every district to benefit from it. Not just mine, yours, Chairman's, Mr. Fleming's, Mr. White's, everybody's. When I say fix them right, I mean, some of these, like the cut through road that I mentioned, I just use that one because I drive by it every single day and I see the trucks, the, the big, when I say trucks, semis coming in and out of it, pilgrims, everybody, pave it, let's don ships, pave it and we're done with it for 20 years. I mean, you know, um, I'm gonna get off my can.
What road are you talking about? I'm sorry.
Straight across from, from 349, where 349 hits 51, there's about a, I don't know how long it is, three quarters mile. It ain't very, but.
About a mile and a half. I got you.
I mean, yeah, it, it, I don't, only person I know on there is Mr. Fleming's sister.
Sister, yeah.
But I know the traffic that, that pounds that road to death and, uh, I'm gonna get off my can and let y'all kick it around, but that's where I'm at with it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Y'all know I've been doing this stuff for a long time and I've done a lot of capital improvement plans and built a lot of buildings for county government. And there isn't one county building that's ever been built that had the support of the taxpayers. That's a fact. Because if you ask them, it wouldn't matter if we were sitting on a $100 million reserve right now. If you go out and ask, you won't find support to build a building for any county purpose. That's just a simple fact. Now, the issue of maybe not having that money later to build a building, that's the truth. I mean, you look around, when we built the state attorney's office, we had to borrow the money and we're still paying that money off now. And we'll be paying that money off for a long time, honestly. And I don't care, I'm not arguing for building. You're not gonna see me arguing for a building. It doesn't make any difference to me. If you take all of your CARES Act funding and spend it on roads, we're still at least 150 years from improving every road in this county because you don't have enough money. You know, I can make the argument for spending every penny we have on roads probably better than anyone up here, only because I've done it longer. So it doesn't make any difference to me, but I'm gonna speak briefly about the need. The little building ups, the little upstairs over here, it isn't adequate to run your administration. It just isn't. It's too small and it was never designed for that. Um, they thought it was, but they built a bunch of little tiny offices in there and it just doesn't function properly for that purpose. Um, those of you that have been in and out of our office know that we've got a small conference room and we need a larger one. We can't even meet with businesses when they come to town. We have to borrow someone's facility. We've had to borrow Swanee Valley Electric many times because we can't entertain business people when we have a big meeting. We've got a little bit larger room now over at, uh, that economic development building. But the administration office brings in millions and millions and millions of dollars and has since I've been here. And it takes a lot of room and people to do it. We're in the business of processing business paperwork and I need someone to work with my HR office. I've got one person, if they go out, then we're stuck. So I need more space for that. I need someone to start help training with some of the grant issues that we're dealing in and that volume. But I'm not gonna beg you for a building or a location. We're gonna do what we have to do in that little building where we are. Do I think that we could do a, a more efficient job and that we should have the people in there to help back up some of the services that we're involved in every day today? Not future, but today? Yeah, I think we should have the people in there to, to help support what we're doing today because we're doing a far greater volume today than we were 10 years ago when we weren't doing anything and we were still driving around in antique dump trucks. So I applaud the board for debating the issue and the different positions that ultimately have to be reconciled, but I'm not begging for a building and I'm not begging for the location. Uh, that location was selected because it became available and the board had discussed previously a campus location. Uh, several commissioners had weighed in on that. I don't know why it isn't in the minutes, but, uh, that was the whole purpose behind trying to find the property and it took years to do it. Um, in fact, there was another property that was on the north end of the county at one time. So.
What was the issue with that piece of property? Or was there an issue other than just didn't buy it?
Which one?
North end.
Well, one of them that we looked at, the people wouldn't sell it. That, that was the problem with it. I mean, it wasn't the ideal location, uh, primarily because the elevation had some pretty significant changes in it, but it was one that looked like it, we might be able to make it work at one time. It would have been closer to, uh, what we call perimeter road.
But we could have got water and sewer there or no?
Um, I'm not sure. We didn't get that far, but the people wouldn't agree to sell the property is what the problem was. So, um, the property that we ultimately bought on 112th, um, will easily accommodate well and septic tanks out there. There's plenty of room. And over time, you're gonna have to have a place to put these buildings. Um, if you want to try to pick out commercial real estate that's available today, you can do that. For the, uh, tax collector and property appraiser, um, you know, I'm simply a facilitator. I'm open to doing whatever y'all want to do, but I'm not gonna argue for a building. So y'all can make that decision and, and we'll build every road that you want to build. I will say that, um, it's important to know that even with an additional construction crew, um, you can't, we would never be able to, to do an enormous volume of roads. We just can't do it. And we, the only way that we're able to do with chip seal, what we're able to do is because we're self-performing in order to save money because bidding these things out, I mean, with the amount of time and equipment it takes to build the base, I'm afraid that we wouldn't, we wouldn't do near the miles of chip seal road if we were trying to bid that out because you wouldn't be able to afford it. But I'm open to doing whatever the board wants done. Um, build a building, don't build a building, move the road department, don't move it. We're gonna do what we have to do and we're gonna stay in business and do the best job that we can with which y'all give us to work with.
I guess the comment I got at this time is, it was a different board when we, when we bought the property and we voted on it. It was a different board.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't, at the end of the day, times change, people come and go and everybody has their opinion and thought process. Uh, at that point in time, we had support to do that, but at this point in time, it's pretty obvious to me that, that we don't. And the one thing I'm not gonna do today, because I've done it in the past and it's really no fun and it doesn't benefit the taxpayers, I'm not gonna break this board in half over a, a building or a piece of property. I'm gonna do my best to unify this board and I got two outspoken commissioners today that's, and I feel like two and a half that, uh, is not in support of doing that. And I feel like Commissioner Hale was, has his reservations, as do I in certain.
Always and when it comes to spending taxpayer money.
I have a quick, quick question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just so I can get it in my head here, I hear what you're saying about not being able to do as many roads with the money if we had to, uh, I think Commissioner Land said, uh, advertise that out.
I would advertise, my thought was, is I understand, I agree with him, what he's saying with, with our guys on equipment, we can't, we, if we put aside half a million dollars, we couldn't do the, we couldn't self-perform and get, get there. We'd be over budgeting, but what I, my thought was, not to cut you off, but.
Yeah.
Put that base work out to bid on various roads that we want to see get done and get done faster. We provide the materials, they, they, they give us a bid on labor and, and their equipment and we'll bring you the rock, you put it down to our specs, give us a bid on that and then we'll hire the chip seal guys to come in and.
So that's going hand to hand with my question. I mean, how much are we, I understand it's a time issue, maybe we can't get it all done in one year, but a year and a half, two years, whatever it would take for whatever we fund roads. I just don't know what the dollar amount we're gonna lose, say per mile. We're gonna lose five miles of road by bidding out and not doing ourselves? We're gonna lose 10 miles?
We just need to bid it and find out. I, I can't even answer the question for you because we've never tried bidding just base work like that before. See, most of your contractors are so tied up today that they're engaged in the whole process from beginning to end.
I want to get every dollar out of it.
We haven't bid one out where we're just bidding out the base work. And I can't tell you how that's gonna work. I don't have any idea.
I, I want to say I don't have a problem with the land we bought out there that we've got and I don't want to get rid of it. And I, I, we can use it, we can still use it.
I'll rock on it.
I'm not against that and I know Mr. Harris has got to have a building sooner or later. Do I think we need it right now? No. Maybe, I don't know, two years, three years? I don't know, but I don't think we need it right now and I sure don't think we need to go do it while we raising taxes. That's just my thoughts. There's four more of y'all, you can, we can do whatever you want to do, but that's just my thinking on it.
I guess my thoughts on that is, if you're not gonna build a admin office, I, I don't really think you should take a piece of property of that nature and just build a shop on it and separate from admin and the shop and think, you know what I'm saying?
I get that.
Uh, I, I just, you know, I don't think that's the thing to do either. I, Mr. Hale had some comments and I did really finish my comment, but what I wanted to say is, uh, I want to keep this board unified and I want us to make good decisions for the county and I want us to try to get along the best we can. At times we won't. I would like to say I, uh, Commissioner Fleming, I, I appreciate your fight, fighting a good fight for the property and what we're gonna do or not, not do, I don't know what that is, but, uh, I just, as of the day, I, I got to, I got to listen to commissioners that have concerns and I got to figure out how we get to where we need to be. And if it's long, if it's down the road before we get that building or we get another piece of property that's more suitable, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm gonna have to be in support of that right now. I got it. These folks want roads. I got folks that want roads. Let's figure out how to get some roads today and move forward. That's really all I got to say on the subject.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, uh, we, we need roads. I agree we need roads paved. And, um, 'cause I be on just about every road in this county and out of the county. I know there's washouts, like right now it's raining. We're gonna have, got crews out there probably fixing little subdivisions, uh, little offroads out in your district that I know, knowing that get washed out at this time of the year. But, uh, I think we'd be putting it in reverse if we, I'm not saying start tomorrow, admin and, and the shop and a vision, I call it a vision. I look at it as a, as a vision, as a plan that's laid out before us that we can use, that can be utilized later on. If we paved all the roads, I wish we can do everything, but if we paved all the roads, uh, those roads gonna have to be maintained once they're done and, and when you run out, you still, you still won't have anything. You see, have a bunch of paved roads that maybe perhaps some people don't live on, but, but I, I, I hope that we'll come to some conclusion and, and let's don't back up. I don't, I have desire to back up. I like, I like to press forward and, uh, I know it costs money. Costs money to buy land. You got to, uh, you gotta spend some money. Sometime you got to launch out, you know? You have to expand your coast sometime in order to get some things accomplished, but I, I like to see the county move forward and then moving forward that we have a facility that, I'm not saying do it, but at, at some point, sometime, we need to do it because you're gonna have to do it anyway and your price is gonna go up. As I said, some of us won't be around that, 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 uh, to have that vision.
Well, and I appreciate your comments. Uh, Commissioner Land made a comment about, number one, here's where we need to start, here's where I'd like to start is, we got the amount of money in the admin line item for future. He suggested taking that out. I need this board to decide if we're gonna leave that money in there to continue planning for the future or if we're gonna take a portion of it out. We need to start right there and then we need to start working and we need to make clear this, precise decisions.
I agree that, because if I'm adding this right, we still have about $6 million worth of.
Expenses.
Wish list items still that we need to address.
I, 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 I understand what everyone has said and I, I, I respect all those opinions. Mr. Hale, I totally understand what you're saying about when you take it out, it's hard to get it back in there. I get it. Um, I just think that that need and that location for me, for that, that type structure with the amount of people, long-term growth without, without utilities, public utilities there, I, I don't think that's the site. But to answer the question that we gotta answer first, like Mr. Chairman said, I, I, for me, I'm scratching the 1.5 million and I'm putting it over here to some of these other needs that in my opinion are way more pressing today, short-term than the, there is a need for a new admin building. I'm not saying there's not. I just think that we have, we're looking at $6 million worth of other stuff, roads being a big one, that isn't even on this list.
That's right.
With a number attached to it. If it, if it's, if it's, if you're asking what I'm doing, I'm scratching 1.5 and the admin building completely out and I'm gonna put it over here and I'm gonna fix some roads and I'm gonna address some cameras at the jail, some. roads, and I'm gonna address some cameras at the jail, some, I'm gonna address some other stuff that's broke that needs fixing today. That's what I'm doing. And that's, I mean, that's all I got to say about the question that you asked.
Mr. White, you got a comment on that?
I'm good with whatever y'all wanna do.
You're the best.
No, I, if you wanna leave a little money in there to fund it, I, I, I know he needs a new building, do we need it right now? I don't think so, but yeah, we're gonna need a building, sooner or later, it's gonna have to happen, somewhere, wherever, I don't know, but we got a piece of land out there, if that's where you wanna put it, that's fine, but I'm in support of leaving some of the money in there, I don't think we need a million and a half in there right now, not, not only because if we started on it today, by the time you got around to building it, you're probably two years out on that, be my guess on it, but-
I don't disagree with that.
You have enough.
At all.
I'm thinking a half a million dollars, leave a half in there and take the million out.
Mr. Hale, you got a thought?
I, I'm good with that, I just, I, I just get nervous, it's like my own checking account, when you take it down to nothing, and we hit a, then all of a sudden we need it, and I don't care if it's for out there or just improving what we have out here.
Well, that's why I wanna leave the half a million dollars.
Right, no, I'm absolutely agreeing with that.
No, I don't wanna zero it out, I mean, yeah, we could, but you're gonna need the building sooner or later, so you, you need to start now, I agree with that, moving forward, and we can do a little bit along and along until we get there. And if they wanna draw up some plans and we wanna get started on it, once we get all that and we determine how much it's gonna cost us, then we get more serious about it. But right now, I think a half a million dollars covers getting us started, we'll go from there.
I did wanna say this, for the benefit of those that may not be aware, every year when we get to this point, and at least some of you commissioners can attest to this, there's always gonna be at least six to 10 million dollars more in requests than you have money to fund. That will always be the case, so if you think that we can build a building when we've satisfied all the other requests, it won't ever happen. One thing that I would ask, and I don't have any problem getting plans done, and then even trying to get some estimates on that, but I think we need to do the same thing for the shop and the other buildings that are gonna be required at the same time.
I don't disagree with that, and I'd welcome it, you know, but I'd like to see a timeline and a cost in what we're doing.
Well, I would set something aside to try to put those plans together. I had run numbers and talked to one of our contractors who's done a lot of those types of buildings in the past, but I know the numbers have gone up on materials. If you wanna leave 500,000 in there, I'm okay with that, but I would ask that you put some money aside in a separate line, create a line for escrowing for the shop, because all of that needs to move at the same time in order to continue to maintain an efficient operation. And quite frankly, the utilities really don't concern me, honestly. We know that we can accommodate that with water, I mean, septic tank and well out there. I don't disagree with you, though, that it'd be nice if we had utilities, but we know that we can do it with well and septic tank as well.
What would it cost to move the fuel farm out there if you wanted to start stockpiling and keeping those trucks out there on that place? Your guess on that?
I, I need to get you some quotes on that, I, I really don't know.
I mean, would you agree to doing that right now?
It, it absolutely needs the fuel farm. I wouldn't shut down what we're doing, yes, we could start stockpiling some materials there, we've got projects in maintenance that we know that's closer to that vicinity, we could start doing some of that, we need to get in there and shape it up and stabilize a, an entrance and do some site work in order to accommodate that. But yes, we could start stockpiling some materials there, but until we move the shop, we need to continue with what we're doing as well, where we are. See, what happens is you get projects, depending on where they are in the county, in fact, I commented to, I don't know, a couple of you maybe about this, that three acres that we have in Welborn on US 90, we had talked about surplusing and getting rid of, since then I've about decided that maybe we need to take that off surplus list, because you'll see that we keep materials out there from time to time, and then they're gone. That's because your right-of-way crew that cleans ditches has one dump truck, if they're working in, on that side of the county, it takes too long to load that dump truck, drive all the way back to the yard and dump it, and then go back. So they dump it in Welborn on that three acres, they may have 25 loads out there, and then on a day when we can do it, we send all 10 of our dump trucks out there and we move that from there back to the yard. So it's a good idea to have multiple locations. We have stockpiled at landfill before when we had projects down in that area. But yes, if we can get enough money to go in there and cut a driveway and stabilize it, do some clearing, do some burning of trees that we've taken down, we could start using that, even without the fuel farm for now, until we can get some numbers on the fuel farm.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Have we explored purchasing additional properties adjacent to the landfill in the past? I mean, have we looked at any of those other vacant sites?
Not since I've been on.
Okay. There are some there, and I don't know the temperature of anyone there of selling or not, I was looking at the website, Ricky Gamble's website there, aerial. When we move that, if we move the fuel farm to 112th, you're not just gonna move tanks, you're gonna have to secure that, fencing, probably cameras, there's gonna be some infrastructure required. We're gonna own the landfill forever, and we already got a very nice road to it, into it, in it, on it, facilities there. It's more, it, it is a little more centrally located to center of county for the logistic I don't know if it's an option, because I haven't pursued it. If we're gonna own the landfill forever, and we need a place to stockpile rock and move the fuel farm to a more centrally located place, why wouldn't we do it, or at least pursue doing it potentially, around the landfill to where we just put a new road in, we got the sheriff's department's animal control, we got a potential site for firing range down there, we buy property on and around there, which will be an increased buffer for the firing range and the noise pollution potentially, and we grow, we grow that area, it's already fenced, the entrance is somewhat secured, I mean, that's just 30 minutes of me thinking about it up here, versus starting another site and, and having to, to pay for some of that infrastructure and costs at a completely new site when we already have half of it, if, if the option is available on adjoining landowner at the landfill. I mean, that's just a suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question off of that. Moving the fuel farm, and I agree, I, I don't wanna put nothing on that property when we have the collection site, and we can use that for stockpiling dirt and all, but we don't have dump trucks and, and graders that pull up to our fuel farm, it's usually just a, a truck with a tank that fills and goes out and fills those, is that correct?
Dump trucks, dump trucks and patch truck and grader, yeah, a lot of our stuff does come to the fuel farm, but the pickup trucks are used with a tank behind the cab to service the graders.
And tractors and things like that.
So when those men come in-
I just didn't know what the factor was.
From an operational, you have to make a distinction between the operational side of this question and stockpiling materials. We've got multiple locations we can stockpile, and we stockpile at the landfill when we need to, if it's in close proximity to a project that we're gonna be working on. I think 25 years from now, you're gonna see a whole lot more animal center behind where it is right now, right on back into that property. I think that the operational side, the road department and administration need to be side by side because of the daily business operation, not the stockpiling, but that's what needs to occur, so we need to be in a location where that can occur. And we can continue to stockpile out there at the landfill, and we will. And I envision that in the future, we'll be stockpiling at the catalyst site as long as we own surplus land out there, once we have a paved road finished. So we'll be doing that forever, every place that we own a piece of property big enough that's in close proximity to the projects that we're doing. But again, we've got that piece of property on 112th, and it was bought for that purpose, but if the board decides that it needs to be someplace else, we can do that, too.
Well, to get through today, we need to just decide what we're leaving, what, what we're gonna leave in the line item, and if we need additional line item for the fuel part, the shop part, we need to decide what those numbers are. We don't have anything, a line item for the shop part right now.
No, that was on your wish list.
What was the number you had in there for that?
900,000.
Sir?
900,000, that was for the shop and the signed shop building and the fuel farm and some site work. Is it gonna be 900? I don't know. It may be a million, it may be 800, I don't have any idea.
I had Commissioner White-
Listen, if you took a million dollars between those two and put half of it on an escrow line for the shop and everything for the, that piece of it, and 500,000 for the administration building, and then put 500,000 back into whatever you want to, that would get us started, we could get the plans started for each, we could start, start doing some of the site work out there for the storage of materials.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I can't get on board with that. What I can get on board with is leaving some money in a line item for a new admin building, half a million, 200,000, 600,000, whatever y'all wanna do there, I can, I can get on board leaving that there, but to, to, to leave, to, to put half a million dollars in two line items for a shop, we're committed to 112th. By the end of the year, 250,000 dollars will be spent on 112th, and that's what we're doing, we're building a campus on 112th, because we will have spent half a million dollars down there on whatever it is, the fuel farm, chain link fence and securities cameras, we're going to 112th. So with that said, I can't get on board with that. If y'all wanna leave a line item for an admin building, because there is a need there in the future, I can support you on that, but I, I, I'm not gonna support today a line item for a shop and moving, because we're, that, with that said, we're committed to 112th. And while we may not have to sell the property today, I, I mean, I could agree not to put a sell sign in front of it, I made that statement earlier, but if y'all wanna hold on to it for a little longer, I'm okay with that, but I'm not okay with starting to build a campus down there in any shape or form in, in, in the next year or two. There is a need for an admin building, I just don't know that we can accomplish that at a structure, maybe an old, old Badcock building, maybe, I know, I know, I know, I know the thought press on have, thought process on having everything on one site, I get it, I understand it. As far as the shop and the, and the, and the fuel and the stockyard at the landfill, personally, I'd like to see us pursue that a little bit, at least explore our options there, it's a dead-end road and a brand-new road to our facility.
For stockpiling.
For stockpiling, or maybe a maintenance shop and our fleet, some of our fleet trucks parked down there, the, the shooting range, buying some additional acreage for growth a, around that facility, I mean, we've already started some growth down there with the animal and the, I mean, the landfill's ours, it ain't, it's not going anywhere.
I, I agree with all that other, and I just don't wanna, I don't think we should move anything at this point in time. I mean, I don't know what it costs, you're in the fuel business, but to change, to move a fuel-
I mean, it's gonna cost us 100 grand minimum to relocate those fuel tanks and get them set up, piped, plumbed with a fueling system, asphalt around them, ballards around them, minimum 100 grand, probably more closer to 150 to relocate those fuel tanks and have them set up in the same similar fashion as what they are at the road department now. You do that on 112th, we're married to it, that's where we're going. And I'm just, I can leave the line item for the building, for wherever y'all wanna do it at, and maybe that's 112th, but I can't leave one for the shop. Three, you can, but I'm, I'm not there. And I don't mean no disrespect by all means when I say that, I'm just telling you my thought process.
Mr. Chairman, I, I seen Mr. Hancock, he's been over there standing for a while.
I'm sorry.
But I, I wanna say this, and, and it's, it's, it's a lot that I do wanna say, I would love to say, and, and, and if I say it and it, and it sound wrong, I don't mean no harm, but I like to say this, that, that landfill, Commissioner Land, you say you were looking at Mr. Gamble's website, how much, how much property did I own there?
There's a, I mean, by, by looking at it on my phone, let me talk in here, by looking at it on my phone, I'm not that savvy with it, but I'm looking at right here, there's 160 acres just to the north of it owned by the Allen family, I don't know the Allen family, I don't know if they'd settle it, if they'd settle it reasonably, but there are some, to the south of it, there's a 40-acre tract, I mean, there are some options there. I haven't talked to anybody, I don't know anybody out there, I don't know the options out there, I'm just, I'm just looking at the aerial.
All that's my family in there. Because the county at some time, some time ago, purchased a lot of, lot of the landfill out now, and some of my family's land, but we've had several locations where we put this state attorney's office, we had, everybody wanted the state attorney office, and I heard you mention about, you know, taking downtown away. Downtown don't have much to offer now, but I listened to, to, to a lot of the constituents, a lot of the people, you know, voters and stuff, they were saying that was the perfect spot. I didn't, and, and we even talking about putting it right behind the football stadium, a lot of discussion, there was a lot of heartache, a lot of discussion. Even talked about the old Pick and Save Building, we had a commissioner, and I think that was a good idea, a great idea, he was saying the campus at that time, District One, former commissioner, he was saying that that was a great spot, it was, it was a great spot, they made the commons, made it a very nice place out there. You know more about the gas, about the tanks and fuel and how, what it's gonna cost, and I wouldn't disagree, it'd probably be pretty expensive of doing some of the things, but I'm not saying that we did it today, and I go back and say it again, but I don't think we should. You say we'd be, we'd be married to the property if we did with the fuel tanks at some point in time, as Commissioner White said, it's gonna have to be. Like I said, I won't be attached to the board, but I will be a viable participant, you know, coming and, 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 and sharing some, some experiences.
Yes, sir.
And I, I, I plead, I, I, I appreciate everything that's, that's been said, and but I, I'm ready to move in the direction that, that, that we keep that property. I don't think it'd be built two or three years, I can't see that, you know, two or three years down the road, and I don't really wanna vacate it to where that, I think we worked hard to get it, and to lose it, that would be a slap in the face to me, you know, I'm still on this board. I think, I think it's a, it was a good, good investment that, that we, that we got that Not now, but we're gonna, it's gonna be needed for the future.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Just briefly for clarification, I haven't proposed relocating the fuel farm that's there. I would leave that fuel farm there, because you've got all the fire trucks, ambulances, and it would still be suitable for our trucks and equipment when moving around on the north end of the county. And then you've got others that use the fuel there as well, county department, so that one probably should stay where it is and just build a new fuel farm wherever we end up and need a fuel farm.
Mr. Hancock, you had a comment, I apologize for not recognizing you sooner.
Well, I'll disagree with Mr. Harris, I, I, there are some taxpayers that don't object to the county spending money, as long as you spend it, hopefully wisely. But there's a big deal, Commissioner White and I and Mr. Land, we kind of agree, or with the, of the same mind. Show us a plan, show us a timeline. When I say yes, I'm talking the taxpayers. Let us see what you're doing or what your plan is when the 112th Street property- When the one hundred and twelfth street property was purchased, I met with Mr. Harris, he went through all the pros and the cons of the county getting that property. One of the big things that I thought was great was a quarter of a million dollars per year in transportation cost savings. But there's a big problem with that, as it has developed over time. It didn't happen. We've had that property for almost two years. Half a million dollars has been lost, because we've continued to not take advantage of that savings. But that property was purchased, and I haven't heard the term county campus for probably four years, five years or more. Now, it's back up as the county campus, but when that property was purchased, I think the, we got away from the two, the buzzword county campus, but there's still a need for it, might not be right now immediate, but if you don't come up with a plan, don't willy-nilly just start putting money into a, a line item somewhere, because you're never going to spend it. You will spend it, excuse me, you will spend it. It won't be what you put the money there to start with for. Priorities will change, and you're going to have to address those priorities. But if you don't come up with an overall plan, Mr. Harris sits there and he comes up with whatever y'all tell him, if you say we need these backs or these figures and this and that, and he'll leave and he'll work with staff and everybody, and he'll come back with something. But the board's gotta make a decision, where do you want the county to be in a short term? Where do you want it to be in two years? And I'll pick on two years, because y'all are gonna be running for election. Three, every four years, and then two years later, two more are gonna be running for reelection. Or election, whichever way the case may be. So things are gonna change. A board cannot plan longer than two years, because if you try to do it, and then, politics being politics, two are gone, then at least three maybe that might still be in agreement. Commissioner Stapleton, this chairman is trying to keep everybody somewhat unified and keep on the same page, which is a good idea, but it won't always work. Personally, I like it when somebody gets up there and disagrees, just to be disagreeing if nothing else.
That's what we're at you for.
It temp-, it brings up some further discussion. I would like to see some planning being done. If you want more roads, don't come up with one in one district, every district's got problem roads. We don't have a transportation improvement plan, but we're not at the size of Dubal County either. Now, and I'll pick on Dubal, 'cause that's where I came from, but we don't have all the same regulations they do either. But you need to come up with a plan, and that man there can come up and tell you where all your worst roads are, ones you can really get to with your chip sealing. I'm not gonna talk about resurfacing and everything else, because you got scot and scrap for that, if you never get the legislature to do something. But you have to plan, you have to make, put some limits. If you want a road chip sealed, how much money do you want to spend? Put a cost, you can make it per mile, quarter mile, a foot, it doesn't make any difference. Come up with something, and then look at the roads you have that fit within the criteria you set. Not every road should be chip sealed. I live on Wiggins Road, don't chip seal Wiggins Road. You're gonna spend a fortune doing that, 'cause you gotta correct all the drainage issues, there's other associated things you got to look at. Come up with a plan, look at your roads. Every, every one of you, well, excuse me, Mr. Fleming, you don't have a whole lot of them, but four of you do, and you need to know where these little short run or short roads are. A former commissioner in District Four went out, looked at Welborn and all those little short roads. I mean, he sat down, did the math, we can get rid, we can keep that grader off of those little short roads. He proved that it works and it saves money, and those roads are still in good shape today. Those are the type roads that you might be able to do something with. And I don't know how long this road Commissioner Land's talking about that he's got, but there are interconnecting roads that you need to look at also, but those may be more likely to go with scap and scrot, or sk-, can't even talk now. But you, you know where I'm coming from. And the taxpayers, if you can come up with the plan, this is what your criteria may or may not be, what y'all determine, you come up with a plan, you come up with a timeline, and then you can budget it. With the discussion you're having today, y'all need to have your own workshop to do a planning, where do you want to be from this time to a point into the future that you determine? If you can do that, then your budget workshops are gonna be nice and simple. You will already have made a lot of the decisions that you need, because you can then plan your budget based on what y'all want to accomplish. But you gotta think about it, and you cannot do it in a short term. You can't do it in two hours, I can tell you that. Y'all are sitting up there now trying to decide something and plan, because that's what you're trying to do, but you can't, you don't have time. You're faced with this budget. And I, I, I'm enjoying the comments, I think this is great, but I don't think it's the right time or place. Whether we need an admin building, yeah, we gonna need one. When I first came up here, I was gonna suggest, let's realize that quarter million dollar a year transportation cost savings, and start stockpiling that dirt out there. If we need to put a second fuel farm there, so be it. Go ahead and build a shop, 'cause the equipment's gonna be coming up there anyway. Move the road department there. If Mr. Harris has a, has a vehicle with wheels on it that runs, he can always go back and forth, he can call them. Maybe to shuffle on him a radio, he can call them. But you see where I'm coming from, the taxpayers are getting tired of no plan, and it changes every two to four years. The whole thinking changes, but yet funds have already been committed that are now just sitting there and you, maybe that's the way life's supposed to be, I don't know. I gotta try to order, organize things and get them in an orderly manner, 'cause I can't function otherwise. I have to stop and consciously think about what I need to do. I try to plan it, don't always work, unfortunately. But that's all I'm asking, and, and I'm just one taxpayer, all of us in this room are taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr.-
Just think about, you know, plan a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bo.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
If I could briefly, historically, we wait until we know we have the money to go out and create plans. That's what we have done in the past. So, again, it goes back to the chicken and the egg equation. Which one comes first, historically, we have allocated the funds, and then we embark on having the engineers engaged, get the plans put together, bid them out. Commissioner White is correct when he said two years, I think that's probably the right timeframe. If the board allocated the funding today, and I'm not making the argument for that, okay? I'm telling you, I'm not gonna argue for a building, but so far as the illustration purpose, if the board allocated the funding for a building today, I would, I would give it four to six months to have your plans done that can be permitted. Then you've got at least a couple of months of bidding and getting that back to the board, and then the construction time and the site work, so typically it's a two-year process from the time the money is allocated. That would be pretty common in this case.
This, on this line item for the, for the admin building fund, I had a number of five hundred thousand. Is everyone in support of that?
I'm good with that, whether it's for an admin building or improving what we have, just whatever it's gonna take to accommodate the growth, if that's what, 'cause I think that's what we're talking about. And I think what Mr. Bo said probably standing true here today as far as, as boards change, I think unfortunately, direction and things of that nature change. But I don't want, I just wanna be clear, I don't wanna start moving, spending a hundred fifty thousand dollars moving the fuel farm somewhere and things like that, at, until we maybe have a plan of where we're going, what we're doing, stockpiling dirt, the, the collection side I'm good with. And the reason why I said if it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars to move it, that's a hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of roads, the way I look at it.
I agree.
Just wanted to throw that out there. I wanna get every, the bang for the buck, every dollar we can get.
Well, and I don't think any of us were, at this point, agreeing on even where to put it at. So, I'd just say you'd put the half a million in there for the admin building, let's get that started, and, and we can still stockpile out there on that. We don't have to have a fuel farm there, it was just a question on my part of how much it would cost to move it, I didn't have any idea. But, yeah, I don't think we, we need to do that until we get ready to do something, if that's where we're gonna do it. So, I'm good with the half a million on the admin line, and let's roll on.
We have consensus on the half million.
Yeah, the ha-, i- if we leave it there, it's not, I mean, we're not gonna start, we're not gonna do, do any construction, we're just leaving the line item there for future, I'm good with that.
It's like build it, yeah.
Yeah.
Miss Nina, we got consensus to leave half million on that line item.
Can we just start from there, we're gonna, do we have consensus to add the million back to the normal contingency line before we decide to break it back out for roads?
Yes.
So we can't get all, okay.
That's what I would think you would do anyway, that's just me.
Mr. Hancock. So you have a comment?
Good morning, gentlemen, I'll make it quick, I know you got a long day. For a guy that spent fifty-some years in construction, I know a little bit about the process, and for you to take a half a million dollars and say that's gonna work for your design, if you pay that much for design, you're in trouble. Your design shouldn't cost any more than a hundred thousand, and I think that's on the high side. So I'm not quite sure why you wanna move so much money just for design, because that's what you're talking about. Let's, let's figure out what the design costs, and let's figure out what the plan is. You really don't need to take that much money.
No, I, I, I mean, to be clear, I wasn't putting half a million aside for design, I mean, it was for building construction. We had a million and a half there, and we're taking, cutting it down. So it's like, it's, it's trying to gradually build up enough funds in that account. I mean, I never-
Yeah, we're not authorizing staff to go hire an architect and an engineer to draw, start drawing up construction plans with that half a million, right?
Sir?
We're not authorizing staff to use that half a million to next budget, so I could go draw up plans.
That, that half million will not be needed for a set of plans. We've never spent that kind of money for a set of plans. So, you're correct, we're not gonna go spend five hundred thousand dollars on a set of plans. If we decide on a set of plans, the board will participate in the conversation, because we'll bring a task order to the board with an estimate or a quote-
For money to leave that account, right, it'll have to come back to-
And the board will participate in that conversation.
Correct.
The half a million is, is to get started with the admin building, it's not just for blueprints, and we're actually gonna try to start saving money for that building, 'cause we know we're gonna need it at some point.
It's a save-
But we don't need no million and a half-
So you're gonna continue every year with that half, half a million or whatever, to get to where you can build that building?
That's correct.
Well, and it, it was already a million and a half, we're taking money out of there to use for other things-
Because it's gonna take two years down the road or three, whatever.
Absolutely, probably three.
So, we can use that money somewhere else right now.
Yeah, I'm just not sure why you're, why you're setting aside that much this year.
Mr. Hancock, for, like, we just, we just talked about, in order for money to leave that account, it'll have to come back to the board, so we're not giving him a staff, a checkbook with five hundred thousand and say, "Go spend it." We're, if he needs to, if he wants to go get plans, he'll bring a task order back and ask for approval to use the funds in that line item to go get some plans.
Okay.
So-
That was my question.
Yeah.
No, there and a half a million, I was like, whoa, paying that much for a design?
It would be documented on an agenda that we receive for every meeting, and the public would have opportunity to voice their opinion in favor or against, so I mean, it would-
Thank you.
It would be front and center.
Thank you.
All right, so we placed the five hundred, put the million back, now we're ready to move forward. Did we decide on the hiring of a construction crew? We got off track.
Yes, I, I mean, I'm for that, I am.
We have consensus to do that.
I, I'm in favor of that, 'cause I think we need it regardless.
Commissioner Land just went to the restroom, I believe, but he was both highly in favor of it. So we have consensus on that, Mr. Harris.
And, Mr. Harris, just to be clear, I think, Nina, what number did you have, two oh?
Two oh nine oh twenty-two.
But that's not all reoccurring, just so we know, right?
Thirty thousand of that is not recurring, that was for a pickup truck.
There you go, okay.
So that puts the total at what, Miss Nina?
Left a million, two fifty-seven, oh thirty-two.
Commissioner Land, just, we spoke on your behalf that you was in support of putting on a new crew, road construction crew.
Yes, sir.
You good with that?
We're good with that, yes, sir.
Just put that in the numbers.
So we're in a million, two fifty-seven, oh thirty-two.
One, two fifty-seven.
Mr. Harris, so I'm clear, the ninety-one thousand, that was part of that?
That's part of the two oh nine.
Correct, so I can check that off, I had it highlighted from yesterday. That's on page two of four.
Mr. White, what'd you say, your new balance, what'd you show? One million, two fifty-seven, oh thirty-two.
Okay, let's, so that took care of everything that was on page two of four. That took care of the construction crew, that was on the top of page four of four.
Hey, can I throw a curveball at y'all real quick?
No, sir.
Just real quick, I made a note of this yesterday, it was gonna probably make Miss Nina and Keith mad, but I knew we had put a hundred thousand, you had asked for a hundred thousand towards Jimmy's office?
Yes.
Do you, do you guys mind, because we had it in there at fifty thousand to do the, the facelift, can we drop that to say seventy-five thousand for that and put twenty-five thousand back into his budget or to a budget line that he can use when, when he's having to actively go after these folks and create documents and things like that, or, you know, go meet them or have them come here, whatever we need to do?
Well, the seventy-five fixes building.
I think it will.
I think it, it would probably be close, I mean, even if it's a little short and they have to come back and we have to do something, I, I think it's close enough, but I'm in agreeance with Commissioner-
I'm fine with that.
Seventy-five and twenty-five for whatever he's gonna do.
He works on pennies.
The money's gonna stay the same, you're just splitting it up.
Just splitting it up, well, that's all I'm asking.
So we need to change those, adjust that line item, Miss Nina.
What would you call that twenty-five, economic development, just put it in his regular?
We did that to hundreds, I mean, I mean, we gave him a hundred thousand.
Yes, ma'am, you're just gonna change-
Department eleven-ten, I got, not his department.
Did we ever fix the camera thing yesterday?
Well, I'm gonna give you an update, I'm gonna try to get somebody's open-
Okay, all right.
I'm gonna get to that, yes, sir.
So that never was in the budget, it was on the outside, right? Ten hundred thousand?
Yes, it was on page three of four, on tab two. At the top.
Okay, so that project would've came out of eleven-ten, right, not his budget, a hundred thousand would've normally come out of your budget, or not the commissioner's budget to do that work. So we're taking twenty-five thousand and giving it to his budget?
Correct.
Goes into operations, the operation-
Goes into operations, the operations side of his budget.
And leave, and we're going to put 75 where we have.
75, we'll keep it in 1110.
1110.
So no change?
No change to the.
That's right.
Right, that's correct.
Right.
You good, Miss Nina?
Yeah, I'm good.
What's the, Commissioner White, on the rock mine, we had this number, we was going to discuss more?
Yeah, while we're here, uh, this is something I've been, me and Mr. Harris has been going over on with the rock mine down in Branford. The, uh, we, we currently have a lease there, it's 92,000 dollars a year for the part we're mining now, which is underwater rock. And I'd like to go back to them, I didn't notice this one, I just got this this morning, I've been after them for a little while to get this to me, and they jotted down some numbers this morning, and I didn't pay attention to what they had done here, but I got to go back to them, but the gist of it is, is another 20-year lease with 30 years to dig the rock, which is the same lease we have now on the hole we're in. But it's going to, I know the first year, the first five years on it's going to be 145,000 dollars a year, in addition to the 92,000 we're paying now. But that gives us more land to strip off and mine and keep us moving, because we're going to run out of rock in that hole, and I don't know, five years, would you say, Mr. Harris, six years, something, somewhere in that?
Well, unless we stop building roads.
Well, that ain't going to happen.
We can stretch it out a little bit.
But.
Can, let me ask you a question real quick, though, you said 142 in addition to the 92?
Yes, you got to keep paying the lease on the one you got, which we owe eight more years on. And then we're starting a new lease on new land behind that, so you're going to, for eight years, you're going to have two lease payments.
Writing it down.
142 plus the 92.
Correct.
Wow. That's pretty hefty.
But we're paying 60 cent a ton now on the lease we're in, this is at 30 cent a ton. And they're figuring the depth of the rock, because when we got that, that pit, they'd already mined all the top rock off of it.
Right.
So we're paying 60 cent a ton for what's left, which is underwater.
Right.
So this is a whole lot more rock, a lot of it's top rock, which we can use on dirt roads, save the wet rock for paved roads, plus we won't be mining out our wet rock near as fast, putting it on dirt roads, and we cut down on the dragline, we don't have to use that dragline near as much.
No, but we'll probably need a new, we just need a new excavator to do the top rock.
Oh, I'm sure.
The way it was done.
Well, that's why I want to bring this up, because there's going to have to be some money in here to get the overburden off and move it, and start that, that other, other part of that, that mine.
Yeah, you're going to need some more people down there as well.
We got the two crushers, so we can still do what we need to do there, but you're going to have to have somebody operating a pan, a bulldozer, whatever it takes to get the overburden off, plus we're going to need to move that overburden to the, the hole we're in to start reclaiming it.
You probably, you're going to need at least two people, maybe three.
Well, that's why I'm bringing this up now, that's why I was pushing them for these numbers, to make sure that we were even going to get there, which I feel like we will. I need to go back to them on some numbers here, but I feel like it, it's doable, and, and I can promise you this, if we don't take it, they got somebody else in line.
We need it, um, there's no question that we're going to have to have it. Those numbers per ton are good numbers. The whole picture, we'll need probably three additional people down there initially, and may be able to drop back to two after that, uh, you know, the top work, the pushing and everything's out of the way to get down to the rock.
Do we still have a pan?
We have an old pan, we, we have an old one, I believe it's still working.
Bulldozer?
Yeah, but we're using the bulldozer with our.
We're going to have to lease a bulldozer.
You'd need another bulldozer.
But I, we wouldn't need a long-term lease on that, would we? We just need a short-term?
Yeah, well.
I don't know how long it takes to do that.
I don't know, there's quite a bit of work involved in stripping. I, I would say probably for a year or two, you might need a bulldozer, and then you could get rid of the bulldozer, but you're going to need the excavator.
All the time.
Full time. You'll need another loader, you're going to need an excavator and a loader, at least one more pickup truck for fuel.
And this is my, this is my thinking on this whole lime rock problem we got, is our, our dragline's old, and it stays tore up quite a bit, but if we move back and we can dig, you can dig all the top rock with an excavator, so you don't need the dragline. So you're not using the, you only use, fire the dragline up when you need a stockpile of wet rock, or whatever to pave a road, asphalt road with, and you use that other rock on your dirt road, so you take some of the pressure off the dragline, I don't think it stays down there as much, and you get more done. Yeah, it's going to cost more money, but it's, it's going to cost you more money either way you go. If you go buy something else, it's going to cost you more money. This, this puts us down the road about 40-something years.
And it does that, I'm sorry?
But it's a year-to-year lease, I mean, they're guaranteeing us 30 years, we got to pay it in 20, the lease, in 20 years, we got 30 years to get the rock off, but it's a per, you pay per year, and they're, they're willing, I even talked to them this morning, they're willing to take a lump sum upfront, if you want to pay some of it upfront, or you can pay it by the year, you can pay it by the month, however you want to do it.
My question is, is, isn't, don't we have a need for the overburden to reclaim where we're at as well? So if we go with an adjoining piece of property, we eliminate having to truck in, or deal with the reclaim that we're held liable for on the current lease, is that right?
In the short term, at some point, you're going to have to reclaim a hole.
You're going to have to reclaim, yeah, but for the short term, you, there's some savings there by staying next door.
We're talking 40 years down the road.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What we need to do is move that clay that we have at the Catalyst site down there for reclamation as well. At some point, we're going to need to speak to that issue of three or four trucks dedicated to that.
I mean, it's, it's going to have to be done at some point, and we're on the hook for it, so whether you like it or not, it's got to be done. And if you do it a little bit along and along, it ain't near as painful if you got to stop and do it all at one time. And that's going to be a big burden on somebody if you do that.
What money, so what, what number would you like to set aside?
I don't, I don't know, Mr. Harris, what do you think for getting started with it? I mean.
Let me, give me one second, I'm trying to answer that question for you.
We never, yeah, we never.
Yeah, we never, that was just, uh.
Is this our discussion right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Frank, what's the timeframe on the reclaim of what we're doing now?
I think as long as the mine's active, we don't have to.
With, with, well, we don't have to, but the reality is, we should be doing reclamation now, should have been doing it all along, because there are areas that you'll never go back and be able to get the underwater rock that the county could have if they had owned a dragline at that time. When I got here, they were using an excavator to dig underwater rock, and you couldn't go to the depth that you needed, but you can't go back now and dig deeper, because now it's 18 feet underwater.
But if you're continuing to excavate.
As long as we're working.
And if you're buying additional property to keep working, then that's an act of mine.
That moves it, that moves the timeline.
That's correct, it doesn't push you into a five-year window of.
That's where I was.
10 million dollars to reclaim a hole.
Which you're coming up on pretty quick.
That's what I was getting at, yeah.
So it's a, it's a, it's a positive in more ways.
And as long, I guess, as long, even if it's two different leases, still the same mine, I would think, and as long as you're showing progress on it.
And you're going to be showing progress when you start stripping the, like you say. But I'm in agreeance, we need to get that big Mount Harris out there from the Catalyst site. Hauled off too.
Remember what you call it, 30, 40 years?
Harris Mountain?
Well, that saved us several million at the time, because we couldn't afford to haul it off, so what I argued was that we were going to use it for buffer, and it worked well for buffer, but now it's used up, so we need to move it to the mine. I'm figuring about 100, about 403,000 dollars a year, and I'm going to tell you what, where I got those numbers. 90,000 dollars in equipment per year, if we can lease the equipment, that's a bulldozer and an excavator, or whatever it's going to take to get the job done. And we can use our pan for some of it, as long as it continues to run. That's 171,000 for manpower, that comes to 261,000, then I added the 142,000 a year, that's 403,000, and we, plus the 92 that's already budgeted.
Yeah, because you're going to have to keep paying that.
So we're at half a million dollars a year, essentially. But 92 is already in the budget.
Yeah.
Do they charge by the ton as we haul it out of there?
No, it, that's, and I, I was, till this morning, I, I wasn't clear on how we actually did that whole thing before, but what we actually did was agreed.
We're paying in advance.
Yeah, you're paying 20 years, it's like an amortization, really, you're just paying a set payment for 20 years, but you got 30 years to get the rock off. You're not paying by ton, you're not, it's just a set amount.
I understand.
Give us a number, Commissioner White, let's move ahead, we know we got to do it, let's do it.
What'd you say, Mr. Harris?
He said half a million.
403 is what we would have to add to the budget, because 92 is already in there.
We need 500,000.
Are you sure that's all?
That'll get us.
That's a conservative number, but that would get us started, I can, for 90,000 dollars, if we can get the equipment.
Now, let's, let me go back, let me back up just a minute, that's, that's what we need to stick in the budget, because we're unsure yet, but, I mean, I got to get a contract on this, this got to go through legal, we got to approve it yet, so it's going to take a little while to do this, but you, once we get it done, we can start, so.
But we need to be mindful of it, like you're saying.
I don't want to be short in that, in that line item, is my point.
Now, I'm, I'm thinking the half a million.
If you add half a million, and leave, leave the 92, add another half a million, we, I'm sure that we'll be good there.
We'll be pretty good.
All right, gentlemen, 500,000, we got consensus?
Got it.
Got consensus. Miss Nina, 500 for the rock mine?
Look, I'd say so.
All right, uh, right now, we're going to move ahead to, want to give an update here on the camera system for the jail, and the flooring, and the window treatments.
Did you look at the flooring yesterday?
You want to, we'll get that new number first, I guess, from Miss Nina. So here's the situation, gentlemen. Went to the jail yesterday, took a tour, uh, looked at the, at the security system, went in the room where they have all the control, like, the control room, basically had the panels in there. When they said they had some video in there that was from when it was built?
It's down the south.
It isn't even up to the standard of Jiffy Store video. I don't know if they don't lose people in there, can't keep track of them.
Probably won't do.
I'm here to tell you right now, I don't know what the number is, but I'm, I was cutting up with you a little bit, but I'm being serious, very serious right now. There's, I mean, you got cameras that the screen's got lines to, it's not even working. You got stuff that, if you did, some of it, you can't even go back, if you need a video to pull, and you can't go back and look at it, it's just live feed. I mean, and these cameras look like something from the 70s that's outside, if you go by there and look at one, it's like the ones they used to put on your shoulder, you know, with your video. I mean, that's about how big it is, I mean, it, it's just terrible. The safety is not there for the people that's working in there, there's, I would guess in excess of, I would say, 50 blind spots, it's probably not even.
Yeah.
And that's just guessing, that's, it could be north of 100, that it's, there's cameras not picking up. That place needs a whole new camera system, end of story, for the welfare of the officers that's in there, and for the welfare of the people that's in there, because when you have people that try to harm themselves, you don't even have cameras that you can actually see. Because they're not clear enough for you to see what's actually going on in that cell, when they're monitoring it. I mean, that, so you, you got somebody there that, that we're paying to look after these folks, and, and you got their hands tied behind their back. And I just think, from a liability standpoint, for the safety of our officers, number one, and also for the, there's a lot of people that goes through that jail that choose to be there, and that's their life, they don't know any different, they stay in trouble. But there is folks that go in that jail that are young, I would say, that got in trouble for something, to where they don't want to be there. But for whatever reason, they've disappointed their family, and they might get in there, and they're back against the wall, and they try to take their life. To me, we have a responsibility on that side.
Yes, sir.
To try to help people. So I want to do whatever's necessary to get this system up to the day standards, outside and inside. I don't know what that is, I would like to just not even deal with, I would like to just deal with the sheriff on this, is what I'm saying. Mark's done the best that he could, tried to bring up the speed, what would bring it, just fix it, Band-Aid. We don't need to do that, we, we need to get, we need to get what we need, I mean, that's, that's the end of the story. Same thing with the window treatment, I will speak to that. That goes back to the people trying to harm themselves, the way the bars are put in there, that needs to be safetop, it needs to be what they're asking for. I would like to see this board support that 100%. Far as the flooring, the flooring does need service, but it is item number three, it can wait. So, gentlemen, I would ask, we'll listen to the sheriff speak now, but I would ask, whatever the number is for those two items, let's, uh, let's do our part to support the sheriff's department.
Sheriff. Well, thank you, Chairman. We had, now, on, far as money-wise, now, I know Mark had put some, I guess, some money aside, in, in which we had it on our wish list, too, for the cameras, are we, are we talking, are my wish, wish list money for the, for the cameras, or, or Mark's?
I want to talk about it combined.
Combined, okay.
I want to, I want, I want somebody to give me a, a somewhat of an outside estimate of what the, a new system costs.
Okay, okay.
That's.
We, we had.
Can you use those other funds, the, what is it, Randy, the, the other pot of money we got, not Harris money, but?
ARPA?
ARPA money for that.
We need, I'm going to make a recommendation to the board, because we did this before with the CARES Act funding, I think we need to reach out to Neighbors Giblin, um, they've studied it closely, and just get an opinion from them on that, and if, if they say that it can be used for that purpose, then so be it.
That, that's just my, that's where I was going with it, I was hoping we could use some money out of that pot of money, instead of out of our contingency or out of our, our general fund, is what I, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, we had, you know, we, which we had it on our, on our wish list, you know, for this American Rescue Fund money, and we had put 80,000 dollars down, and I'm not sure how much Mark had, um, but here again, since Commissioner Stapleton has went over there and seen, you know, what the kind of issue is, and I agree with him 100%, we just, it needs to be one complete system that's up to date and so forth, so, uh, I'm not sure if this, this money here I'm talking about would cover it, I guess we'd have to get some estimates, and then maybe get back with you on it.
Gentlemen, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I can see it being 150,000 dollars.
Well, I mean, what, you just need consensus here, or do we got to put a certain amount of money?
I'll tell you what we can try to do, we can let Security Safe come walk through the building, and try to come up with a good guesstimate, and make a final decision before you adopt your tentative budget, we can make adjustments.
Well, that's where I was going with it, I mean, we got the consensus, I guess, that we're, we're going to fix it, we just need to know how much, at this point, and where the funds are going to, where we end up finally getting the funds out of to pay for it, but.
Um, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, I heard, heard Mr. Harris say, get a security company to come and look at it. How would you feel, what, what would be your thought, be better? You know where, and your employees know where, where, where the cameras needed.
Right, yeah, what, the, the camera systems, you know, that, the ones that we have there now, they are through Security Safe Company. And when we was over there last, yesterday, you know, we was, what we're going to do is just do a, just do a walkthrough and, and just document all the blind spots and, you know, and make sure that all the blind spots are covered. So naturally, going to be additional cameras that we're going to have to purchase. And then, yes, and then, then once we know how many we need, then we can get with, or let Security Safe, you know, give us estimate at that point in time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I like, I mean, I'm good with that idea, but didn't? Mr. Durham, the exterior cameras are our responsibility, interiors are yours, is that right?
All of them.
Well, no, we'd be all of them because it's a candidate.
I was confused.
It was ingress and egress, that, that were in the original building.
Okay.
There's been additional put in there. But if, if I may, when we do this, we need to make sure that we're not dealing with proprietary system also. Because every time we do something like this, we end up with proprietary system and they lock you in and they'll bend you over a barrel.
Right.
Okay? We need non-proprietary cameras in here, something that anybody can work on, anybody can come in and repair. Because we've got fire alarm systems right now that we stuck with Jacksonville Sound coming out of Jacksonville, and that's an eight hundred dollar bill every time they come up. We don't need that.
I'm, I'm fine with, with you folks.
You just need to make sure that when we spec it out, we say non-proprietary.
Oh, let me clean this up real quick, though, gentlemen. He had fifty-two thousand five hundred in there for the interior bar covers, or the exterior and interior. Are y'all fine with that, we can go ahead and, I'd like to get, see that through, and we can make that happen?
I'm good, yeah.
I'm good.
Nina, we got consensus on this interior and exterior bars, fifty-two, five hundred. Would you please do that and update it?
Seven oh four, five thirty-two.
Say that again.
Seven oh four, five thirty-two.
Thank you.
Which, which now, you're on the, you're talking about, we're talking about a whole new system in, at the jail, you know, plus, you know, we mentioned yesterday, we got to do the, you know, pull the, which we got in our wish list, some, some wiring from the jail that we was trying to do last year, but it didn't, didn't develop, but we got some money in for it. So I guess we can add some money to the wiring of the jail for, because these, these cameras will, will actually need the, the wiring system in there also. Which I guess that, that'll be part of the, of the estimate.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
We got to have power, we got to have power as well.
Right.
So you, you suggested a hundred and fifty, is that what you think to start with?
We're just, I, I thought we're just doing a consensus on it, that we're going to fund it.
Right.
We just need somebody to get us some estimates and bring it back.
I would just thought, I mean, I.
For budgeting purposes, I don't know what you do.
That's what I'm saying, for budget.
You too, I mean, obviously, you're going to get more than one estimate, I would think, something.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, I mean, that's, you know, once, once we say you, for us, for me to go ahead, we'll, we'll get you whatever we need to get this, this project done because, as you see, it, it definitely needs it. And from inside and, and, and like I said, outside on that backside, I was talking about yesterday, there's none, there's not even a camera out there. And we definitely need it there, so we just, it's just a very, much-needed need for us to get this done.
Yeah, it's, it's way worse than everything I would envision walking into.
If you put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward it right now, you can adjust that.
Yeah.
Later. Any, anyone's estimate is better than no estimate, and then we can bid it later.
That's correct. You can always put the money back.
All right, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to, got consensus on one fifty, Ms. Nina?
Just for the sheriff's part.
For the?
For the whole jail.
I mean, he's on the wish list, he's got eighty for the cameras.
Well, we, I.
We're combining those.
I guess we need to, can we? Well, you had forty on one and eighty on the other.
Just make one item, one, one camera listed a hundred and fifty.
It's going to be our item anyway, shouldn't it just be on the, on the county's, on our, our sheet, really?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, when we get back to his wish list, eighty will be taken care of already.
Yeah, we just won't even, we won't have discussion on that anymore. We're going to, we're going to make the one fifty what Mark's item was.
Nineteen thirty.
Right, that's right. And the sheriff's going to forego five vehicles for that.
On the nineteen thirty line is what I'm thinking.
That's five pickup trucks we're taking out.
Yeah, because they said they could buy them at twenty-four thousand a piece.
Sheriff, we're going to ask you to bring back next year about the flooring, and we'll discuss that, we'll see how funds are.
That'd be fine.
I would just really like to try to make these other two things happen to start with, even though Billings.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Did you want to go with, on this rest of the wish list on my, on my end, or you want to, or we are, are in line yet?
While you're here, I say, let's do it.
Sure, just a reminder, on the wish list on those cameras, that included animal control, though, so just keep that in mind.
Okay. Yeah, animal, animal control is about the same. Well, I think the Security Safe.
The camera system's no good down there, but that's a small system, we can probably get it in there within that, but we may not. I just want to make sure it was clear that we're not just talking about the jail in there, we're talking about animal control as well.
Got you.
So why don't we just get an estimate for both? We got a hundred and fifty thousand pulled out there for it.
Yeah.
My hope is it covers it all.
And then that plus, plus where the, where y'all approved the, for the new kennel or, you know, some blocks of the new kennel, there's not a camera out there at all, so we actually need some additional cameras out there, so we, we add it all together.
Sheriff, this is where you get with those folks, and they're going to get to do that jail work, and they just kind of got to give us a little something on the side, and that's going to be those kennels, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, there you go, yes, sir, we can do that too.
Got to lean on them a little bit.
All right, we can do that. I'll stick, I'll stick chief on them.
There you go.
He's pretty good at negotiating.
Oh, he's tight, let me tell you.
Oh, crook, what are you talking about? I've, I've dealt with him. I tried to buy a vehicle from him one time, what are you talking about? He's rough.
All right, Sheriff, let's, let's dig into what you got right now.
And if you're looking at my wish list here, and they're numbered as a priority, and, and this is probably going to be a sore subject for everybody, but, you know, the first one is, is, is our Criminal Division building. And just doing a little research on this thing, I mean, I think everybody here has been there and see what kind of shapes it in. And we done some little research, and it was built back in nineteen seventy-two, so that thing is forty-nine years old. And it's, it actually was originally one of them red iron buildings and just been, you know, added on to some, the offices and so forth, and then, and then I think it's been added on several times up front where some offices are. We have, we have outgrown the place for, for, for years now. Matter of fact, when, when I have to have a deputy meeting, the school has been gracious enough to give us a little portable building out, out to, at the school bus, so we could have a meeting because their office, there's not enough room for everybody to get in there. So, and we've, you know, asked for some money on that right there. And I guess, I guess, you know, from listening, sitting back and audience listening about the other issues with these buildings and so forth, is, you know, we, you know, we need to, we're going to get something started, you know, if, because we need, first of all, we need a, a location for it to be at, and then we need to have some type of blueprint or some, some documentation about how we want it built and, and the architect of it and all so forth. So, and where the, the Criminal Division is now, I know there's eight acres right behind there that's, that the county owns. Now, I'm not familiar with every piece of property the county owns, but I know there's one right there. So that's just an option there. So I guess what, I guess what I'm asking is, is to see if we can't agree on maybe a location for it, and if nothing else, let's get started with some, but you set some money aside or give us some money for some, some building plans.
We, I know we had discussion on this in previous years, but we never created a line item for any type of, of new.
Not that I'm aware of.
We, we never had anything for.
No, we've looked at the property behind it, but we've never established a line, an escrow line.
I got an idea.
Are you sure, are you sure? I thought we did have.
Yeah, but we, it.
Yeah, we, we had, yeah, it's been, we had, see, we've been talking, or I've been talking about this for several years now, and at one time, when we had some money left over from the budget, we earmarked two hundred thousand, you know, for a building fund. But is that still there, Nina?
And then, sir, the commission at the time.
They took it away.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, it was, it was discussed, but it went away. But I, I mean, I just thought I remembered there being. So it would be the pleasure of the board if they chose to put some money back in that item, is what the sheriff is saying.
Well, here's my thought on that.
Yes, sir.
Why not just take whatever money he's going to give you back every year and let him put that in a line item for a building fund, but don't take it away from you again? That gives him incentive to save money because he needs a new building.
That's what the discussion was prior. I mean, there was some discussion on that, is what I'm saying, in previous years.
What used to happen was a previous sheriff used to come in here with the money that was left over, and he'd say, Commissioners, I'm giving you three hundred thousand back, but I want you to spend a hundred thousand on this, and I want you to spend fifty on that and seventy-five on this. Is that right, Commissioner Fleming?
That's right.
That's exactly what happened, so.
But I want to say this too.
It always got spent.
At one time, we were talking about the plaza or the facility, and probably the sheriff could have, and I don't want to go back and open up Ken Warren, the building that, the property that we got on one hundred and twelve would be a prime example also. And then the eight acres that you got back there, that also came up, about a building, a new sheriff's office, back behind where the Criminal Division building at now, those eight acres. But at one time, it was, you know, brought up about the campus, if we have got that property out on north, Sheriff's Department, the medical examiner, you know, I think would be somewhere near where Sheriff's Department office would be at, so. I didn't want to throw that back in there, I was trying to keep, you know, keep it to myself. If that, that property out on one hundred and twelve, I don't know whether you want to go out for it, you know, at the Sheriff's Department.
Have, have you identified any property that would possibly work for, or had any thoughts, I guess, is what I'm saying, inside your office with your folks?
No, I mean, really, we haven't. I mean, we, I know that there's that eight, eight acres that's right behind us where the existing office is at, but I'm not sure, I'd have to do some research to see, you know, where other property the county owns, maybe Mr. Harris can help us out with that, something that might be suitable for us, that they, that we already own. But, I, I mean, because we, I've been with him for several years and all, and, and we even tried to put some money, money back, you know, for it, you know, because we won't return back in, and, and Commissioner White has a good idea, but, you know, it's, it's kind of be, kind of a hit and miss. Sometimes, you know, we'll have some left over, it all depends how, what kind of year we have, you know, and, and just like when they took some money from me and then we, and the COVID hit, you know, that, them next, them two years were slim for us, and we don't, we don't have that kind of money to turn it back in, so. But, you know, just, just researching some of this, this American Rescue plan, is that, that none of this money can be used for this building here?
I don't think we know what we can use it for.
I, I don't have any reason to believe you can use it for a building. Now, it may be suitable to be used for some other things. What I suggest is that we talk to the same law firm that gave us legal opinions on the CARES Act funds, and we can reach out to them and get an opinion from them, and then we'll know. But there's a better chance that it can be used for something other than a building. See, it was real easy with the utilities because it specifically identified utilities and expansion of broadband and some other things. So I think it's just a matter of time, we just get an opinion.
I think some of these other items on the list, I think it's probably more clear that it could be used for. I mean, if we don't have clarity on that right now, I don't have a problem with circling back around to that once we do have.
I don't.
Have clarity, Sheriff.
I just see that, that ARPA money or American Rescue money sitting there, but so far, I ain't found a whole lot you can use it for, except for, like Randy said, that you can use it for the utilities. That's why I keep asking when these cameras and this and that comes up, can we use it for that, can we use it for that, you know?
Well, and, and one of those explanations that, you know, with the email that we got, you know, through President Biden says that, you know, this, this year can be a relief package of reduced crime and combat, combat gun violence, you know. I mean, I guess, you know, I, I'm not sure how you would construe that, you know, but we definitely need, definitely need the office be able to do a, operate out of to, to reduce crime and, and the gun violence, you know. So, I mean, they're just, I guess, there's numerous, numerous ways to evaluate this and look at it and all, but the bottom line is that, you know, we, like I say, looking, you know, at, doing the math, it's forty-nine years old, and we've outgrown it, and, and it's just, it's just something there that we, it's, you know, just like y'all talk about the, a need for a building, I mean, we, we definitely there, we actually, we're past there.
My question is, if you do the eight acres behind where you're at now, what are you going to do with the building you got?
Well, I mean, yep, everybody's talking about storage, I mean, there are just probably numerous, numerous things that you could use it for, you know. Plus, you know, we've got, you know, since I've been there, you know, we built that little shop there and some of these little buildings for storage there for our equipment and all. So, I mean, that's something there, it'll be right there next to us, so we could off, off of utilize, utilize that. It's something that wouldn't be, wouldn't go to waste, you know, we've built it, and, and there's some nice, little nice storage shelters here, they got the, they're actually the climate-controlled, so there's some nice little buildings right there that we can continue to use. So all that wouldn't go to waste. Now, that main building that we're in, you know, you know, that's often definitely got some issues, you know. Like I say, it's old red, red iron building, you know, and if you look on the very top roof of it and all, some of them, some of them rafters are there or, or starting to rot or rot through and so forth because of the leaks that's been over through the years. Now, the county has put a roof on it here recently, and that kind of helps stop the leaks, but it's, it's still, it's here, you know, forty-nine years old, you, you can understand the problem that we have in there.
Sheriff, if you're not willing to talk, talk about that paint job.
Well, it, it.
That thing's down like a new penny on the outside.
It, it helps the looks of it, but still don't increase the, our square footage, though.
I was out there just last week, it's nice out there.
I've been out there in that Criminal Division, it, it's a mess, but the reason why I say it, county owned that property out there on one hundred and twelve, you got eight acres behind you, you haven't thought seriously about, excuse me, about, about where you're at, the eight acres out there?
Yeah, I mean, you know, that, that's, we want, you know, acreage to, you know, to put our building out there. We even thought about putting, you know, EOC next to us out there since we kind of work hand in hand together because we're going to need a, a new EOC also, maybe enough property. Now, as far as, you know, and maybe Mr. Harris can help us out with, as far as the property-wise, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much up, up to game with, you know, a, a nice suitable place, you know, I'm not set on, you know, right where we're at, but just a place, enough room for us to, to, to have a nice building and, and maybe EOC with us. And I know me, me and Mr. Harris talked a while back, is that enough acreage for the jail also, you know, because one, now, we know we're not going to meet the jail anytime soon, but we would have our acreage to have everything all together. Not saying we need to do that, but, I mean, that's just, well, I guess what I'm asking is that, you know, we've been asking for a while, and, and I say, yeah, we all, we all need one, but then nothing ever happens. So I just, you know, since we have, if we're able to use some of this money, is to, is at least get something started for us. And that way, you know, when I come back forward again and say, okay, Commissioners, we've got a building plan, we got a, we got a site to build it, and so let's, let's go forward with it. So just, just need some help with, with getting it, just getting it started, really.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I honestly believe that the eight acres is not the right place to put it. It's got a, best I can remember, a pretty significant elevation change from west to east.
And that was my next question, is the whole building.
We're draining onto someone else's property is what we're draining onto. So it's not the, a good location. I've seen explosive growth, it's happening all over Florida, and it's coming to a town near you, and it isn't going to be long. And you're going to be scrambling trying to find pieces of property to butcher buildings. The sheriff, in my opinion, whoever happens to be sheriff when this happens, should have a large enough piece of property to have his entire operation on a piece of property, this building and space to build the jail. Because it's all operational, it's all a business, and you need enough space to do it, and the places where I've seen it done, it works best, to keep it all in one place. When I got here, the whole mindset was that we do everything downtown in the backyard of the courthouse. That's from the old Western movies, and we're way beyond that now. So that building was put out, I mean, it was out there, it was an existing building when the Sheriff's Department moved out there years ago, the building where you are.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, that's just an indication that it's okay to move away from the courthouse. And it's operated out there, and it will continue to do so. But at some point, that jail is going to come down, this downtown. When that courthouse has to be expanded, I promise you, something's going in that direction, and it's probably going to be a courthouse, and it might be twenty years from now, thirty years from now. But if you get the real estate that you need today, or when we have a correction in maybe a year or two, and have a piece of property large enough to do the new building, and start escrowing for something for a building now, and we'll get the answer from Neighbors Giblin about ARPA funds, I'll try to reach them today. them today or tomorrow, depending on what time we get out of here and get that ball rolling.
The problem we have with trying to secure a piece of property is every time this discussion comes up, it, obviously, it's about having everything in one location and having a jail, and nobody wants a jail in their backyard. And that's a fact. And so the conversation gets real uncomfortable, because you try to find a piece of property that's big enough and suitable, but then as soon as you start having discussion on it, the residents, which obviously have a right to have voiced their opinion, is they don't want it. I mean, I don't want it next to me either. I, you know. So that's what makes it tough, is trying to plan.
I mean, what, what acreage would it take to do like a jail, an EOC, and a sheriff's department? I mean, what are we thinking, 20 acres, 30 acres?
Your next jail needs to be single story. That's, that multi-story is the hands down most expensive construction there is. I would start with 50 acres.
Wow. You gotta have.
Because you're planning, you're planning ahead, okay? You're trying to plan ahead. You're trying to forecast and say, okay, what's this thing going to look like in, what are we going to look like in 30 years?
We need about 200 acres where they can do like they do in Georgia, and they grow their own food.
Is there anything the county owns, what you're talking about now?
We don't have anything like that.
What we got, 125?
Oh, you're talking about over there?
Commissioner Fleming, before you even get off on that.
I said District Four.
On 112th Street. I want to clear that up. I'll have to bear wrestle you over that, but we ain't doing it.
Why not?
Come on.
Suitable.
It's just thing that happened.
I, I think if you, wherever you put that jail at, you gotta have utilities. I mean, that, I don't think you can stack in 197 inmates today, yesterday, on well and septic. So you gotta be closer to town, tie into.
No, you don't have to be close town. You just have to have utilities.
Well, you gotta have your own utility.
You build, you build a utility like a commercial operation. You have to. So you're right. You're right. You have to have something more than a septic tank.
Well, I think if you're going to put the sheriff there too, you need access to fiber and the high speed access that he can get for EOC and all that too.
We're fixing to put fiber everywhere in the world.
Well, if we get that grant.
If we get that grant.
We got it, right, Jim?
If you notice, that map had green dots on it. There are 8,877 green dots on that map.
Sheriff, I'm, I think we're all under the, under the impression very clearly that you need a property, and we need to allocate some funds as soon as we understand what we can and can't do. I would think we would go ahead and move down this list and let you kind of, kind of explain to us and fight, fight for what you're thinking.
All right. The, the next one is the, the IT projects. And I just, yeah, Vicki's still here. She, she might can, one, one thing that, well, we talked about the wiring of the jail for the cameras, and, and, well, we also need some wiring, the upgrade, the infrastructure of the jail for the internet, and our connectivity from the jail to the courthouse there. We had put some money aside last year, but, you know, it didn't develop, so we, so we turned that back in. So that should be held over for, for the wiring of the jail. And then we need a vortex server, just to, I guess this will be to, to upgrade the server that we have now for the smart cop and stuff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we, we need another, another vortex server to kind of upgrade from that, or I have an extra one. Also, upgrade the office 365 for our computer, for our computers. And then, like I said yesterday, is that we've got these core medical services there that are jail. I think we've born a server from the clerk's office, so we, we need one for, for them themselves, for the jail. And then this FortNet solution, need to replace our current firewall for, for better, for better solutions. So the, the whole, whole project here, minus the 27 we've already, already set aside, is 238,566 for the upgrade of the, the different, different items that we, that we really need to get done to keep us, you know, keep us up, speeding up, up to date about all our technology part.
Any questions for the sheriff on this item? Comments, gentlemen? It's real quiet around here, don't it, Sheriff?
Yeah, it's, it's real quiet. So if that's good or bad.
I guess my thought is, I mean, I'm looking at some of the other things on here, and going off what the sheriff just read, what possibly some of that money could be used for. We just don't know in what direction we could put some of this to help them.
Well, that's what I'm, that's my whole, like, we need some clarity on the money.
Well, here, here's the thing with that.
Well, I'm sorry, Randy, but one, one thing, what I, on this, is for the, for wiring on it, let me look at this thing. Yeah, for water sewer and broad, broadband infrastructure. So I'm not sure if this wiring would, would include in the broadband for that there, Ms. Harris?
I think that would be a little bit of a stretch. But here's what I would suggest to you. You have the money, okay? This is in reverse. This is unusual. I mean, because this never happens. It's typically reimbursement. So you have the money. The question is, you haven't created the line items for the budget to reconcile it with the money that you have, which we can do, because that money's going to sit in a reserve until the board decides what you're spending it on. Okay? So when we get the clarification, you could come back and visit these issues, because you already have the money in your possession. Another 4.3 will come sometime next year, next calendar year. So it isn't as pressing necessarily. You know, we're going to get the opinion from Neighbor's Gibleon, but so far as trying to establish a line item in the current budget and trying to itemize everything, you, you could allocate those funds in the next year, whenever we get the opinion.
The IT stuff is a, is a now thing, though. I mean, that's stuff that we have got now to stay siege, just to light everything else. And Vicki can explain that a lot more better than I can.
John, the wiring is going to be like what you have in here, so you can plug a computer in. If we want to move to a VoIP, we have a 1902 PBX over there that we're running off of wind stream. We have to have a plug in for it. The jail unfortunately runs from hub to hub to hub. I can't tell you what's in there until I unplug one. I've got vendors that have to be, be able to be in there for those pods, for our inmates to be able to order things, to be able to communicate with their family members. And that's just running on an open network. We have got to get that secured. We've got to clean that up. We also need power in there in order to bring up a new network. That is a perfect location because it's the hardest building I have downtown for a, a DR site, which is a disaster recovery. If something happened with him, like when the power went out over there, if I'd have had just a little bit of power in that one room, I could have kept his smart cop up. These are the kind of things that we're going to need to be able to move him forward. That building nor that courthouse is going anywhere, anytime soon, gentlemen, and y'all know that. They may decide to keep part of that jail even in the future, just to bring inmates in to go to court the next day. So there's a lot of reasons that go ahead and shore up what we have. The cameras, he definitely needs. They're sitting on the wide network as well. We'd like to be able to put them on a VLAN where when my gentleman have to be, SWAT has to run out, they can pull those cameras right up on those laptops, and they can see exactly what's happening inside. It's all about public safety, and it's all about making sure that this gentleman can run when he needs to run.
Thank you.
It's all hardware, it's wiring, it's fiber, and it's just from building to building. And that's what keeps us all up.
Miss, real quick, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Does that vortex server, does it touch in any shape, form, or fashion anyway, the 911 part of it? That maybe we could access those funds?
It is what your dispatchers run off of. So I don't know if smart cop is considered part of the 911. That's what they dispatch with. That application runs on every deputy's laptop and every person's PC that works for the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
Along with the EOC.
Sean, Sean will shake his head no out there. He, he's, he's kind of more up to speed. He's more my IT guy, but, but I'm going to get into some of the 911 money here, but, but Sean says no on that one there.
Can't do it, huh?
I, I wish.
Yeah. Okay. Just thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
Let's, uh, let's keep going down the list, Sheriff.
All right.
Where you can kind of explain each one of them. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, the next, next one is personnel. Here again, I guess we've got to have clarity about what, what we can use it for. But, and, and I realize if, you know, I could always use new, new deputies, correctional officers, and, and dispatchers and all. And I, I know that this is, you know, if we are able to use this money, we, we, we hire them now, and, you know, we're going to, that's a, obviously a reoccurring cost. But what we do, but we do definitely need, though, if we can, if we can swing it, is, is some, is some new dispatchers, or I'm not saying new, some additional dispatchers. You know, right now, we got, I think there's 13, or 12 or 13 up there now. And, and I talked to Eddie Hand about, you know, because we figured out there's probably about 25% of the call load is, is through, you know, EMS, fire and EMS. Now, we, now we dispatch for the, for Lavo Police Department, Lavo Fire Department, Sheriff's Office, you know, Fire Department, I mean, the Swan County Fire Rescue and EMS. And, you know, none of this is, is, no, no one contributes to us as far as the dispatch. So we're just trying to maybe get some additional funding to add additional dispatchers, either, either give me the money where I can hire some, or maybe Eddie and his budget, where he can, he can hire some to help us out with this call load. Because, I mean, as, as everybody knows, it, our call, our call load gets, you know, heavier and heavier, and we just, we just need additional dispatchers up there. Plus, you know, I'd like to try to kind of up their pay too, you know. They're, you know, they're not the, I think their starting pay is like 20, 24,000. You know, there, there's some overtime in there, brings up about 26, which, you know, I just may realize it's not a whole lot of money nowadays. And talking about the, the 911 money that Mr. Hale brought up is that, you know, we figured up there's, we can use 33% of the 911 money for, for salaries, you know. So, so we might can use that, you know, either to, either to hire some additional ones, or maybe give the ones that up there on the raise up there. So, so we're just, we're just looking at, you know, as far as personnel wise, you know, additional dispatchers. And, and then maybe a bump in the raise for the ones that's already there.
Any questions on this item?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Sheriff, you, the sheriff's department provides the dispatchers and funds the dispatchers out of your budget.
Yes, sir.
100%?
100%.
For, for you said fire, EMS, city police, and city fire?
Yes, sir.
Do any of those departments kick in any contributions to help fund those positions in which they use?
No, sir, they don't. No, sir. No, like I said, I'd, I'd talked to Eddie Hand and, and Eddie, which we talked about it before, and, you know, and he's, and he realizes that, hey, you know, we're providing a service for them, and, and Eddie can tell you, they, they get busier just like we do, you know, and then that increases, because everything, anytime you make a phone call, 911, or any type of admin call, it goes up there. And it's, that's, that's the problem, is that their call load and phone calls just increasing, and, and I'm not increasing the personnel up there. And then, and then I'm, I'm carrying the burden of, of hiring and, you know, maintaining the dispatch up there. And like I say, Eddie was, you know, been more than willing to help me out, or you, you give me the money, I'll hire him, give Eddie the money, and let him hire some, however you, the best way you want to try to handle this. Or, and then, like I say, we can, we're looking at that 911 money to, to help with the, the salaries or, or raise for some, one of the two.
Do you, do you have a, is, I mean, is there a long, long-term standing agreement between you and the city, and, and why you, why you provide that? Do they, they don't kick in any funds? And you, you talked about Ms. Chief, but what about the city? City doesn't?
Well, we, Chief Williams can probably tell us a little more. I, I don't.
He's been on the city side.
Yeah, he, he might can tell us a little more. I, I know the city, they're, they're, they're tight on money. But, I mean, but if we can get them to pay some, some money, kick in there too, I'm, I'm all for it. Yes, sir.
You should do the city dispatch for their own personnel till 5:00 PM. And then the sheriff, being the most powerful man in the county, is not going to tell another agency that they couldn't take care of the call volume. But we're at a whole different level in services this day and time. And I, I firmly believe that if you use the service, you need skin in the game, and you need to help contribute. And it's, it's changed. Call volume's tremendous. And just like we said, we got it down to about 25% is fire rescue, about 25%, you know, is, is city police, and 1% is city fire. I mean, but it, it, it's a burden, especially when you've got three, two, maybe sometimes three up there. You've got a fire or, or rescue event. The radio systems are not the same, so they're trying to monitor two different systems. And we're paying these folks very minimal monies. It, it's becoming a burden and, and very difficult for us. And it's time that we increase our communication capabilities and manpower and responsibilities of those agencies that receive the service that sheriff's offices provide.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I was going with that. I'm not picking on the chief's budget or, or the city or anybody else. But, I mean, if you need more help, I think that we need to reach out to those folks, say, hey, y'all need to kick in some.
Yeah, like I said, we're, you know, we're, here again, the, the dispatchers, they, they need more money, you know. And, and it's, you know, we've, we've kind of stapled off as far as the, you know, the revolving door up there, you know. We've, I've been able to give them a little bit of increase in the raise, and that, that's helped them out and all. And I got some, I got some, some dang good dispatchers up there, you know, and I want to retain them and all. But, you know, when, we just need more help up there. If, you know, one gets sick, as a matter of fact, I just got a text while I was sitting there, one's got a COVID now, so they won't be in. So, so it's, it is, is getting, you know, to a kind of a critical point, to where we need some, some extra help up there, whether you give it to me, give it to Eddie, or if we get through 911, or all, all the be, all the above.
Right, right. I understand.
I just wanted to comment. I mean, I'm, I'm in definite full support that it's time for dispatch to improve for sure. Our call load is consistently going up from the time that county fire was, you know, EMS was first started. The sheriff's office has always controlled dispatch. Dispatch is funded through all county funds, whether it's my budget, his budget, you know, that does, you know. So county is contributing, whether you put some money in my budget to, and I, and I pay it out of my budget to fund some of them, or whether you put it all in his budget, and he funds it. It's all county funds.
That's right.
I agree with Chief Williams. The, you know, the city isn't contributing a dime to it, you know. And they're almost, I mean, I, y'all have, I mean, you, you said y'all done the figures, and they're 25%. It seems like, you know, when I listen to y'all's channel, it's about 70, 50s, inside comos, you know, as, as many as they run.
That's right. I was going, I wasn't, I was going.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter whether, you know, we rearrange my budget in the future to, to contribute to it or not. It's all county funds. If the sheriff's going to continue to control dispatch, and I think the money should go into the sheriff's budget, because those employees work for him. There's no, you know, there's no, really no sense in, you know, unless, unless dispatch was, you know, made into a county department, that dispatches everybody and the board funds that, then the sheriff needs the money. There's no sense in me having money in my budget, just, but we do need the people.
I think the most important.
That's the thing that, that is needed. The people need to be there. You know, anytime we have a multiple call, if, if just a single rep comes out, those dispatchers, on top of dispatching the sheriff's office and the fire department, they're also dispatching, getting a hold of the helicopter. They're also getting a hold of FHP and notifying them. And on top of that, while they're doing that, there's another, especially if it's on the interstate, there's another 25 or 30 911 calls coming in for the same call that they're having answered, because it rains. So we need, they need the dispatch, no doubt about it. And as long, like I said, as long as it's safe, that the sheriff is controlling that, I think, I mean, like I said, the county's funding it now, we just need to fund it to the level it needs to be.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not con, con, or saying that you don't need more help. What I was saying was, more importantly, about time we ask the city to help us out a little bit.
I agree with that.
Well, I have a question with that. When you say we need to ask the city, is that a board function?
I was hoping you'd handle that for us.
I'm sure you were.
I think you'd be the perfect liaison.
But, I mean, you know, I think it's different, because I agree with Eddie on the fact that it is a county operation.
We, I have a problem.
But we need some clarity on whether Sheriff St. John is going to go over there and ask, or if you as the board, the governing board of our county is, and I, I nominate y'all.
Mr. Chairman, well, Sheriff, you haven't talked to the city manager about the city helping out?
It has been mentioned to the chief.
Yeah, we, yeah, and we, but we had, I had talked to, well, he's, he's gone to the, the administrator, Mr. Williams. I think he's gone, they've changed out and all. And, you know, and, and he's, he's agreed to it, or not say agreed to it, but he, he understands that, yeah, they need to contribute. Now, nothing was discussed about how much and so forth, but now the new manager, we have, I have not.
It's time to grab the bull by the horns. And honestly, when, you know, when I was chiefing, my dad was sheriff there for a good period, he wasn't going to let me down, you know what I'm saying? But I've always been, even as the administrator there, we should have been paying our way as well, because it is a tremendous.
because it is a tremendous frontline prioritized service for the citizens of this community. And we need four more up there at a minimum. Four just to help cover with fire and rescue operations, and then the rest, you know, to handle the law enforcement side. But, you know, we just need to know who's going to start these wheels in motion if we're ever going to get there.
I agree, Ms. Chairman. I guess my question would be to Keith and Nina, do we fund it just into the sheriff's side of it? If we're showing its reimbursement on the fire side, or do we put it in Eddie's and let him pay the sheriff? Okay. Okay.
We could not pay a part of his employees through the county.
Right.
So if Eddie wants, you could work with Eddie to see if he wanted to reduce his contingency to fund them, if it doesn't cost you any money, or if you want to take it out of your, it's a county function.
Period.
Eddie wants to throw his contingency to y'all for help, that's between you and the director.
Gotcha.
Same with the city. The city would pay us to fund, fund through the sheriff, because he can't get funds directly to him, correct? We have to get, like, Downing Park pays us, County Branches pays us. Would the city work the same way and give us?
Right, yes, yes, yeah.
And then when he comes with a bigger budget every year with nine-one-one, we would have all these different revenues to offset our costs.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right.
So who's calling the city?
Commissioner Landau was just fixing to say, we have a consensus on the board for you to speak with the city manager. And see if you can have some discussions.
Oh, I'll tackle that.
And report back to us.
I guess the newbie gets to sign the.
Well, it's freshman job.
Grunt work.
Freshman job.
I'll tell you what, I would do one better with you. I'll go with you to their next meeting, then get up and speak with them. I'm all.
I'll start the conversation. I think it's time to kick in some funds. That means me going out and asking for it, I'll go do it.
All right, the, these next items, you know, here again, I guess it's going to have to determine, you know, what we can use this American Rescue Fund money for. And I'm going by this, what President Biden had said about reduce crime and combat gun violence. And the next item is vehicles, you know, we could buy some, naturally, always going to, you know, with us, we always need vehicles, you know, we need to, we buy X number, or try to buy X numbers of vehicles every year to just make sure we're up to speed and just kind of rotate the ones out that's got high mileage or got some problems with them. We're looking at six vehicles there. The next one is firearms, pistols. You know, we got quite a few sworn officers, I think there's sixty, seventy, seventy-five, I think, handguns and all. And they're all about the end of their life expectancy as far as, you know, how, as far as their recommendation to get them replaced. That and the tasers. The guns and taser would be kind of the, I guess, would go hand in hand. Now, the tasers, they actually, they kind of come and go a little quicker than firearms. Matter of fact, some of the tasers that we have now are outdated, and, you know, they don't make them no more. And they've got some different models that we were trying to go with. So you got vehicles, guns, and tasers, if this would fall under this part of reducing crime. And here again, I guess we just have to question if this can be used for this, I guess.
We're going to, and you're doing a great job of what you're doing, explaining each item. We're going to go through all these items, and we're going to get clarification in the coming, I don't know if it's weeks or a month, but we will be able to revisit some of this, and I feel as a board, we will be able to get you some funds. I can't tell you what that number is.
Yes, sir.
But I'm saying, we can't today just say, hey, we're going to give you such and such for this item. But I want you to present it to us like you're doing.
Okay, all right.
And just give us time to circle back around as soon as we get clarity. And you hold us accountable to come through for you on what we can.
Okay.
What the board's willing to do.
All right, so like I say, the vehicles, guns, and fires, or tasers would be, you know, obviously, you know, equipment that we need to upgrade from what we already have. And number six would be the CERT equipment. Now, what that is, is we're trying to start a CERT team there at the county jail. And what I mean by this is there's a group of personnel that we already have there, but we just need equipment, you know, when we have, like they have someone that needs to be extracted from a cell that's got, or have some problems in the jail. They would have the proper equipment to go in there and to detain anybody that's there causing some problems. You know, and protect my officers, but also protect the inmates where they don't get hurt. You know, right now, we don't have the personnel, we have the personnel there, they would just have to be trained and have the equipment there to do it. And we got quite a few that's willing to do this, get on this base of this CERT team and to help us out with that. We just need equipment. So this would just be for the training and equipment on that part there. We, I think we talked briefly about the firing range yesterday, I think it was. And the problem there is, you know, is property, you know, just like for our building. So, but we're looking at, or as, well, I guess just whatever goes with the, hang on just a minute.
You had three hundred thousand on that line item for the firing range, and we had good discussion on that yesterday. I mean, I think we're just trying.
Yeah, so it'd be, everything that goes along with it, you know, as far as the, you know, the dirt work, you know, the target holders, a place for to store the equipment and all. And even like to have a little building for our classroom there, you know, because a lot of times, you know, we got to have some classroom training before we actually go out there and start shooting. So that's, you know, that's something there, just like we were saying yesterday, the only thing we had was the city police departments and firing range, which, Chief showed me a picture yesterday, it's, you got to stay in the water right now to shoot it, there's kind of a draining problem there. And I was supposed to shoot tomorrow, so I'm not sure, I'm going to be looking forward to that. And then, like I say, just a place for that, you know, we can look at, here again, maybe Mr. Harris can help us out with a place or a park that the county owns. The next item is the command center, command post. And what this is, we've got one now, it's just a pull behind the little camper trailer that's been converted, you know. It's, you know, right now, it doesn't meet our needs. Matter of fact, we let the, during this COVID, we let the city use it and all, and we got some roof leaks in it, so we got some issues with it. So we was looking at upgrading that, you know, for like a one that, you know, kind of like a Winnebago-type deal where you have the, you can drive it on itself, you ain't got to pull it. And we're looking at, well, we've got two hundred thousand for it. We've already addressed the agency security cameras, which I think we're, got to come a long ways with that and right there. And now, some of this emergency equipment for deputies, training, radar, and traffic enforcement, you know, naturally, all that there would be, here again, contingency on what we're able to use this money for. But if so, we got just different equipment, emergency equipment for the deputies. And always, always need it for training, different funds for training, because we do what we can as far as training men in-house, in here with us. You know, but a lot of times, they have to go out of county. We got, you know, the travel time per DM, we got expenses for motel expenses. So we just need a little extra money for the training for the guys. And the last thing here is this drug identification system. It's, now that's thirty thousand dollars for it. And the reason we're asking, the reason asking for that is it's a machine to where it'll analyze the drugs in time of a container to where it, you know, they don't have to bring, actually take the drugs out, you know, and do the test like we do now, like a field test. It actually shoots a light through it and able to identify it. And I think I told each and one of you that, you know, we had borrowed one up there, we had this event at the Spirit of Swanee one time, and they got some drugs, and then they tested it, and it was fentanyl. And so, and they didn't have to take it out of the package, so none of us was exposed to it. So, you know how that fentanyl works, it dissolves through your body. So that's something there that is very much needed, you know, for our drug task force guys to analyze any type of drug and so forth they run across.
Yes, sir. I think that's everything, isn't it?
Yes, that's the last one out there.
Well, I think we got a good handle on what you're looking at. Some of these items, like we've had good discussion on far as the firing range, I feel like that's consensus of the board that we just have to find the place and help you get that accomplished. Obviously, we have the security cameras situation well on its way. And these other things, I just think as we get clarification, that we should be able, I mean, it would be my, my feelings that we support you, you know, obviously, we won't have limited amount, but you're fighting for it. And I think there's items here that we can help with. I don't see us being able to obviously do this whole amount, but I'm, there's things we can do, I feel like. And I just think, as we move forward, you're at every meeting that we have, as far as monthly meetings, and you just, you know, need to ask us if we have clarification yet.
Okay.
From your side, I'm saying, just stay on top of it.
You know, I got your number.
Absolutely, I know.
I think they would all somewhat qualify, and only one maybe would be that fencing, I'm not sure, number fourteen or something, but it's just not a whole bunch of money there.
But as far as clarification about the dispatchers, I know Commissioner Landau's going to get with the city. You want, you say y'all want to get with them first, see what kind of thoughts, their thoughts are before we move forward anything on this, or?
If the chief or you guys give me some call load data information, I think with that, I'd have enough information to go sit down and talk with them and go from there. I mean, I'm sure they're going to be reluctant, but.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we've run some numbers here, so we can actually give them to you today.
You've got some data to show.
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 we got it here. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Chairman.
I just need to clarify one more time, the IT stuff is essential. And the camera system is not going to work without what we've asked for on this IT stuff, which is the servers. So I just don't want to get confused in requesting ARPA money or contingency dollars. We have, we're in dire need for that IT upgrade.
Yeah, in which, you're going to, you know, the, I guess, it might be a blessing in disguise here is that replacing these cameras, you know, we're going to have to run wires, you know, from, like I said, just some of these blind spots anyway. So, you know, it'd behoove us to do all the wiring at one time, you know, instead of trying to, you know, do it one time, then come back and do it. So just do it all at one time, and which, which Chief is right, we definitely need it yesterday.
Here's what we're going to do, we've got hours left of trying to get where we need to be. We're going to break for lunch, take a recess. We're going to clarify that item when we come back.
Okay.
That's going to be first, we're going to decide about the IT, what we want to do, how we want to do. That will be first item of business, and we'll continue on. We will recess for an hour, we'll come back at 1:15.
Thank you, guys.
I said we pick up where the, where we left off, with the two thirty-eight, five sixty-five that the sheriff was requesting on the IT projects. He's expressing that that's of urgency. So I need to see what the pleasure of the board is and where you want.
Go ahead.
Didn't he say the cameras, they need that equipment to run the cameras?
Pulled it down.
They need that equipment to run the cameras.
Correct.
Okay. Can we?
I would say we approve the money, and then if we can use it out of the, whatever, we'll just re swap money around. Can we do that? You can, just, where are we at? Five fifty-four, five thirty-two, and how much is that? Two, two thirty-eight. Even? Uh, two thirty-eight, five sixty-five.
You're saying if we take that out of what, ma'am?
He's got it in his budget, I think.
No, it.
Is it carryover?
Where's it at? No, for the wiring, the jail wiring.
IT projects, it says. So you need to fold two sixty-six.
Right, yeah, but twenty-seven of that should be already back in the budget. So, I mean, but to answer your question, yes, we'll need to hold two sixty-six, but twenty-seven that we had held up from last year to be able to do this, but it never developed, so we turned it back in because we couldn't hold it.
So if it's in our possession, then you need to hold two sixty-six.
You need two sixty-six.
Yes.
And that would leave us with two eighty-eight, five thirty-two. Is that a hard number? I mean, is that something y'all already got a price on, or is that a guess, or what?
Let me let Vicky speak. She's got a little more knowledge on it than I do.
What we're wanting to do is be able to pull some new wiring in that building, as you know, it is antiquated, and we've got to get them shored up. And that's just the base. So once the wiring goes in, then Mark can do whatever, or whatever you folks decide to do with your camera system. And yes, sir, these numbers are very close to what we're going to need. I can't see it being anymore. I kind of went a little bit higher, just in case of price changes, from when you get a quote and when you guys let me order.
It's just wiring, two hundred and sixty-six, though?
No, sir, we're looking for a Fortinet, which is also a huge firewall that's going to go in the face of this and bring us up to date. What we have currently right now going out to the internet is antiquated, it's old, old, old stuff, and Cisco is no longer giving us any more patches for it. So this has to get done so that we can build back inside, but we've got to get that safety, security spot right there, and that's the Fortinet that we need.
Okay, now this.
It's different pieces, but it's all part of getting this all shored up.
This is all, this is not just wiring, Commissioner. This is, you know, the, the two sixty-six will include the Vortex server, the Office three sixty-five, the core medical server, the wiring, and then the Fortinet solutions. So it's not just wiring, it's all the combination of it all, but the wiring and all those other servers, they all are incorporated. They're all needed to do the job, get the job done, is what I'm saying. So it's not just wiring.
Is this a board thing, or is this a sheriff's department thing?
That would be a.
It's part of the building? Mr. Harris?
The wiring in the building is part of it. This other equipment stuff would be the sheriff's. I mean, it would be, he'd be making a request in his regular budget if this unique funding wasn't here at this time, or he'd be trying to fund it out of his regular budget.
So, question, I guess I'm trying, do we need to put this money in maintenance and let him handle it? Or does it go in the sheriff's budget and he handles it?
The equipment part of it, you know, if we get a determination that this money can be used for that purpose, then the purchase just needs to be made, and it won't be recurring as a part of his base budget going forward. So you could say, we're going to set this money aside for all the equipment in a line. We get the determination from Neighbor's Gibleen that it's bound to use the money for that purpose. If that's what you're going to do, you would spend it out of that line. They could send us the invoice, we'll process it, send it over for payment, it doesn't become a part of his base budget. The wiring, though, any wiring of the facility, we'd fund through Mark's budget.
So if we're going to approve this, how do we need to do this?
And the cameras, the cameras as well would come out of Mark's.
Right, so, but they're asking for two sixty-six, right?
Yes, sir.
And some of that's wiring? I ain't looking at the thing.
It'd be, well, it'd be forty thousand would be wiring.
So that would need to come.
Now, that, but forty thousand, that would include for the cameras now.
You've got two different issues here.
Wiring is going to just be your copper in the walls, minus the twenty-seven that you gave them back.
Okay.
And then this is all they would have to fund.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, if you, if you minus, if you minus the twenty-seven, you know, that we had from last year, so the wiring that we was first originally going to do was for twelve thousand. And then the other add-ons is the server and so forth, and other items that we need to get everything up to speed.
That's what I was, so we just need to do one line item for it, and then y'all split it out, or how does it?
What I would do is take that item number four, twelve thousand, five sixty-six, and move that much money into Mark's budget to handle the wiring. If it's going to be contracted out, is that the assumption, Vicky?
Yes, sir.
So we've got a company that we've used before, Huff or something like that?
Huff, yes, sir, but we'll get three quotes, whatever we need to do.
Yeah, but the twelve, five sixty-six, I don't care if you put it in Mark's budget, you can put it in the eleven-ten budget. Eleven-ten is the board's budget, we'll process it when it comes through. And then the equipment that he's talking about is different now. The equipment, if you wanted to create an IT slash sheriff line in your eleven-ten budget, the board's budget, The equipment, if you wanted to create an IT slash sheriff line in your 1110 budget, the board's budget, I administer all of that. If it gets purchased under a state contract or something, the bills would come to us, and we would process them and pay them. That way, again, that does not become a part of the base budget of the sheriff's department.
Sounds good.
Hey, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Oh, how, I mean, I understand maybe probably the, I don't know, the wiring would qualify for any of that money that we talked about that could be used for that. I mean, how long would it take us, like you said, there's things we can do and, and change and adopt before we actually adopt the budget? But how long do you think it would take to get a, a answer from that law firm as to how we can use this, or?
It shouldn't take long. I mean, because I'm asking a relatively general question, I, I know they've already answered the question. They're probably gonna want, they're gonna want us to pay them.
To ask that question, sure.
Give us an answer, but we did it before, so it's not, I don't think it'll take us very long, for sure, before you get to your tentative budget, uh, hearing, we should be able to have an answer.
I think we should just move forward and approve the stuff we want to approve pending that answer. And if that answer comes back, then we have to revisit it.
That's why I say, put it on, put that on a line, if you want to create a line and put the balance there, um, we'll get a determination, and then we'll know.
But that way, they can go ahead and start if they need to, or we gotta wait on that?
I'd wait until we get an answer on the money.
We just need to take the money from somewhere else, though, because we need to do the work.
Yeah, I think, say if we don't, because that's something we just, we just need to get done, I mean.
We've got to do this to be able to do the cameras.
Cameras, well, that's why I was asking the question.
But I'm, I'm saying, even if they come back and say we can't do it, I'm saying we need to get the money from somewhere right now to where we can just be done with it.
Let, let me, can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
This 12,000, 566, is this the same wiring, though, that we're talking about for the cameras?
This is going to be just for the data lines.
Okay, so, that's, that's what I was getting at. If this is just for the data lines, then is there additional wiring that's gonna be required for this camera system?
Yes.
Exactly, yes, the camera wiring system would have to have its own wire.
I don't know what, I don't know what we're looking at.
It's more than likely, we haven't determined where the DVRs are all will be located, because you're talking about additional cameras, a lot of additional cameras.
Okay, so that's an entirely separate wiring issue that would be associated with the cameras. That is not this 12, 566. This is just for the data.
Okay, and, and there's one more piece of the puzzle, gentlemen, I'm sorry. Just adding a little bit more money to the problem. If we put this where the proposed area is for the servers and these possible new DDR location, because they can't go where the ones are now. There's not enough space there, it's a cabinet that's this tall and four or five feet wide. You're not gonna shove that much stuff in there. So, they're looking at a centralized location in the jail, which means we need a power supply. You need 200 amps to that area right there to carry that. And that was part of an engineering, uh, the electrical engineer assessment that we're, are we completed with that, Randy? I haven't heard.
We only, we only completed the portion that was associated with determining what it would take in the way of generators to provide the power.
So, I mean, I believe it's doable, but it's, you know, it's another piece. I don't want to give you half of a problem, I want to give you the whole problem.
Sure.
And that was the main reason that we gave back the 27,000 last year, was because we never could get the power to the location. When you're running data lines, you can only go so many feet with a, with a run. 300 feet is maxing it, and you don't get any data at the end. So, the central location in the jail, which is gonna keep the siege just compliant, because it's gonna be behind two locked doors, and no inmates will be near it, and that's the only place that we had in that location to pull all brand-new wiring.
So, you gotta run another 200-amp service in that to where you're talking about?
There is a location in the courthouse.
Yeah, there's a location, and it's, there's a main mechanical room, and it, and it's doable. But, you know, it's a 200-amp service, you're, you're having to run power.
What do you think?
Where's, where's that power gonna start?
It would start in the electrical mechanical room in the Sallyport there.
Okay.
Switchgear in there, we can come off of it, and just, what I would do is put a switch in a switchgear panel, there's spare blanks there, run a 200-amp service in, put a dedicated 200-amp panel for IT and computer stuff, because that's what you need anyway.
So, we gotta get that engineered too?
Sir?
You gotta have that engineered too?
It's already, it's already done, isn't it?
That part is not engineered, the overall for the generators is engineered.
Yeah, the other is, was an entirely different issue that had to do with the generators.
Um, I, I don't see it being much to it, but if you want to do it correctly and make sure that everything is loaded properly, that's the right way to do it.
I'm just trying to get all the pluses.
Exactly, exactly.
And so, that means you gotta add more power, am I correct?
Two, two things.
And that's what the 200-amp service is for, yes, sir.
Two, two things that would be additional that are not on this piece of paper, if you're looking at this, and I.
I don't even have that, I don't.
I don't know where I'm looking for that, I don't see that.
Nina doesn't have one, I think the sheriff probably.
Sheriff, is that, is that page in this or no?
It should be in that one that I gave you.
I can't find that.
Oh, no, wait, wait, it may, it may not be now, it may not be.
In any event, there are two additional, two additional things that need to be added. One is whatever the cost is associated with getting the electrical in there, the 200-amp service. The other is still the wiring associated with the cameras, which is entirely separate from this.
But we shot, we shot for 150 grand on the cameras, I'm thinking you're probably gonna get close.
Yeah, we'll know when we have them take a look at it. But I don't want you thinking that it's part of this.
No, I, yeah, I understand that. In my mind, I was thinking 150 grand probably covers that, that's my guess. So, how much, what, what do you guess on electrical, moving that electrical service? 20,000?
How far is it, Mark, from that disconnect that's in there up to?
I'm having to guess, I would say 75, 100 feet.
Okay.
So, if you, if you're in, you don't have to upgrade wire size, you shouldn't have to upgrade wire size at that distance.
Okay, when you get there, is, there's more wiring that needs to be done once you get there?
Well, once you do that, you're in such a small area, it's a, it's an insignificant, something I could absorb.
Okay, so you're, whatever additional circuits, you're gonna be able to take care of that.
Yeah, because we're talking an area of half the size of that dais, I can just run.
Okay, it'll be less than a million dollars, Commissioner.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Yes.
Well, we started at.
I would figure 20, I wouldn't go as high as 50, it probably won't cost 20.
Well, that's what I was thinking, 20 grand or whatever.
15 to 20.
Hold on, on what part?
The service, just you, moving your 200-amp service?
To get the 200-amp service in there.
200-amp single-phase service?
I don't even think it'd be that much. I'm just trying to make sure we got enough in there to cover.
Right now is copper price.
We get our money back if we don't spend it all? Okay.
266 plus 20?
Oh, yeah.
The electrical service would be, and it would need to go into Mark's budget.
On the other way. Yes, ma'am.
In addition.
For 300,000. Or you, I guess you could do it all under yours, under the board.
I would do one line in maintenance for the electrical. And then the other, I would put a separate line and wait for Neighbor's Giblin's opinion. We could put that in the board's budget, that's 1110, Department 1110, and I'll take care of that. We'll get the opinion, if they come back and say, yeah, it's an allowable expense, then we'll coordinate with the sheriff's department and Vicky, and we'll order whatever needs to be ordered, and we'll, we'll process the payment.
Which.
The wiring, the, the wiring that Vicky is speaking of has a cost of $40,000. There's already 27,434 that was allocated, and it's in the budget.
I don't, there is that, that's the one I don't have, I don't have the 27 in the budget.
Well, it probably came back from the sheriff's and got absorbed.
She may be able to show you where that is. So, Nina, is that money actually, is that aside somewhere?
I don't have anything earmarked. Got more going.
Okay, so it went in a general fund?
So, that's what I'm saying, I don't have it earmarked anywhere, but we were to place it in at some line, the 27, 535.
Okay, so, if that's the case, then this 238, 566. Okay, so we would need to add 27, 434 to this for the allocation. The money, part of the money is there already, it's just sitting there, it just hasn't been allocated. So, the 238,000, 566 would need to be increased.
To 266, 266 even?
Yeah, 266.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, what, did it just roll back in the general fund or something?
Yes.
Plus, plus 20, plus 12, right?
That's, yeah, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Well, no, I thought the 12 was covered in the 266.
The 266 is, does include the 12.
We just need to split it out and put it in maintenance. For the wiring. Well, that's why we were gonna put the line item in the, in, in the board's budget.
You would take the 40,000 and put it in the maintenance budget for the wiring. The 40,000.
Mr. Harris, explain to Ms. Nina how we'd need to do it.
Gentlemen, y'all listen, and then if we have a question, we'll back up, but let's get it line itemed out.
Okay, we've got a total expense, including wiring and equipment, of $266,000. There you go, there's the list. So, the $40,000 item, which is item number four on the list, total cost of 40, we need to budget that amount of money in the facilities maintenance budget. The balance, all of this other equipment, we're gonna create a standalone line item in budget 1110. So, we'll put $226,000 on that line for this equipment. And then we'll get an opinion from Neighbor's Giblin, and then we'll go forward if, and we'll know before the tentative budget hearing.
And that 40 includes the service he needs?
No, the 40 is, I, I'm gonna call that wiring of jail, you'll need to add another.
Whatever.
Yeah, 12, 15,000 for a 200-amp service in there.
Let's just make it 50, I think it can be done for that, it ain't that far.
No, that's where I was getting confused.
Did you say 50 or 15?
50, total, 40 and 10. For the wiring.
That, that's fine.
Round number.
That's fine.
Ms. Nina, in maintenance, we need to add 50,000.
Instead of 40?
Instead of 40.
Yes, ma'am.
And make it 2, round it 230 instead of 226, or leave it at 226?
Leave it at 226.
Leave that at 226.
Because that's, that's equipment.
Take it out of contingency until we know ARC can pay us that, or we can offset it to ARC at the tentative hearing.
That's what I think, yeah.
Let's, I, I would just, I would, I mean, we, we're gonna have to get some money and put in contingency, but if we just take it out of contingency, well. No, because we're talking about reimbursement out of that other, that's the only thing with that.
Well, can't you reimburse the contingency if you get the money?
They say we can use ARC money for this.
We could.
Put it right back here.
Yeah.
If we do it this way, if we take it out of contingency, it's done.
Yeah.
Done, we can move forward, we don't have to work, regardless, my, my vote is to make it happen. Regardless of if the funds say we can, we can't, we got to get it from somewhere, just do it, because it, everything relies on it.
Yeah, you can't do the cameras, you can't, I mean, it's gotta be done.
Right, so.
So, when you subtract.
Yeah.
I'm in support of contingency, just taking it out of that, is the board consensus on that?
I'm good with that, and like she said, if we can find out later, we can use it.
We're gonna reimburse ourselves.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct, Ms. Nina. That's it, Sheriff, you good?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank y'all. Just, um, I'll just wait for the ruling on some of those other items that I had there for that American Rescue money. Thank you, thanks, Chairman, Commissioners.
Absolutely.
That's wrong.
It has the wrong number.
I think so.
Nina, what's left?
Hit the wrong number here.
78, 532.
I didn't put another zero on there.
Go ahead.
Oh, 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 point oh, yep, I had a zero missing. It almost broke, I'll say we're done. 932. We don't need to talk about nothing else, we ain't got no more money.
Sir?
We don't need to talk about nothing else, we ain't got no more money.
Yeah.
What was that total pro, that was 266?
I got 266 and 50K, that's what I thought, 278, 532.
Yeah, we took out of the, out of the, uh.
Unless I'm missing something. When I get to my.
We're fighting.
Much over in there to do roads. So, we got.
But what of that other money we actually got? That's free and clear.
Contingency money. Nothing, that's what I'm saying. We ain't put nothing in there. Rate a burn on my payroll. That's what I'm sitting here saying, yeah. I don't see nothing in here I wrote down.
Right, that's what we fixed.
I just wanted to say, because we ain't got nothing, we under.
And maybe, maybe a drop in the bucket for contingency too.
Let's, yes.
Ms. Nina, I have a question, a couple. The cares money, what is the number on that? The ARPA money, what is the number on that?
The ARPA money is, um, hold on a second.
ARPA, let's see. I've got 1,184,050 left after the utilities extension. Now, that doesn't count the 4.3 that should come in next year. Right.
You said 1, 1,184, or what?
050? 050.76.
Okay.
050.
We don't, we don't match, but anyway, next year, I've got 5.497 million, do you have that?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
5.497 for next year.
That's in addition to what we have? That would be total. We should have 4.3 coming in next year, because it was done.
But what we didn't spend this year, I added to that.
Which would be about right.
That, that would be. With the 1, 184. That figure I gave was the balance from the funding that we've already received.
Right, we're gonna get another 4.3.
So, we'll add it to the 4.3.
And we're deducting 3 for the, but we got, we got a back end, but we're gonna offset that with the 750,000.
Yes.
So, we have 5.497, 792 in next year's budget reserve.
But we've only got a portion of that in hand, 1,184.
Right.
And what do we have left in cares, you said?
Cares, we have 5,304, 586. Just so I'm clear, just so I'm clear on cares, that money is free and clear to use, it's in general fund, we can use it however we choose. Yes or no?
That's correct, we can.
It's time to talk about roads, gentlemen.
So, that's, was there any? After we've moved the 1.1 out and into fire. That five?
Yes.
Five figure that you gave?
They're Greg's.
Yes, rock crusher.
Gotta get some money first.
I agree.
And maybe get, make that one, ask Giblin about that money, can it be used for that money? Maybe we ask that, airports. And then we took 200 and, 209 out for the outside agencies?
139.
139, sorry, yes.
Right.
That's after all that.
Yeah.
5304?
Yeah.
Is after all that?
Yeah.
Uh, the one thing on the, Commissioner Hale just brought it to my attention. Uh, on our first pa, on our pages we've been going over, just so I'm clear and not to leave Mr. Scott out. He had a request in here for hangar construction and ballpark construction. Mr. Harris, will you ask the question about the ARPA money? If, is it possible for the, any of that, to go to any of that, or no?
I can't answer that question, to be honest with you, I can try to get us an answer. I can't answer that question, to be honest with you, I can try to get us an answer.
I'm saying, when you ask the question about the other...
That I can do, sure.
We're gonna go that route?
That's fine.
That works.
That good?
That works.
Either that or cares, I'm good, I'm just...
We're going easy.
I'm flexible.
Thank you.
I tried to get that done yesterday, but...
I saw that.
Almost had it. Ms. Nina woke up on me though, she was on top of it, she wouldn't let it slide.
Just have to have the decisions on that.
Right, right.
Sir, take your seat.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, we got, uh, can you give us the new contingency, Ms. Nina? You had said it already, and I didn't write it down.
Two seventy-eight, five thirty-two.
Two seventy-eight, five thirty-two, gentlemen, at this point in time, do you want that contingency increased?
Yes.
Well, do you wanna increase it now, or do you wanna wait on these decisions, see if we get that sheriff's money back?
Uh, it don't matter to me, I just, procedural wise, do we have to do it now in workshops, before, or as long as we do it before we finalize?
Before tentative budget adoption.
Which is what they...
You'd give a good idea, I don't remember what the date was on that.
September, ain't it?
Yeah.
So we probably got time to get an opinion back, Mr. Harris?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I would think so.
I see his point now, understand.
Okay, uh, so we're in a grants to leave it like it is until we get that result. Uh, next question.
Um, Mr. Chairman, before we get too far, will somebody make a note to remind us before we go to that meeting, that hey, here was the, here was the opinion from Neighbors, if y'all wanna move some contingency, you need to do it now, cause it came back this. Or no, you don't need to move any, because you're gonna get it back, we're gonna use sheriff's money, ARP. Just make, I mean, make sure that that...
So we don't...
That bonus not on me, that I, that I, we forget it, so who's, who's, whose task was reminding us?
I'll be bringing the response back as quick as I can, so I'll venture that it'll probably be in a regular board meeting before.
That we make a change if we need to, based on what Neighbor says, okay?
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry, Chairman.
No, that's fine, I, I wanna be clarified, because trust me, you get so many things going, you forget.
Don't wanna drop the ball on that.
Uh, all right, gentlemen, y'all had discussed some road issues, uh, chip seal, paving, different things. We need to decide what your thoughts are.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Cause I'm not sure if I wrote it down. When we were talking about the mine, did we decide on five hundred thousand, or did we leave that at four?
Half a million's what I thought.
Okay. Is that what we figured was five hundred? Cause I got, I went ahead at lunchtime and got us, tried to get a more firm number on the equipment, it was just about twelve thousand dollars more, I just didn't want us to be trying to figure dead on.
I think you figured like four hundred and something, and we, we went ahead and went with five hundred.
Right. So I figured four oh three, it'll be four fifteen, but we need that extra in there, just in case.
Ms. Nina, you had us at five hundred on that line item?
We're good.
I got you. All right, uh, so just to be clear, as it stands right now, we're at five million, three oh four, five eighty-six in cares, a million, one eighty-four, oh five, seventy-six in the American Recovery Act, and we're at two seventy-eight, five thirty-two in contingency, as we stand right now.
Absolutely.
That's the numbers I got.
Me too.
Right.
And we, yeah, that's right.
Scratch of the nine hundred thousand this year, correct?
Correct.
Mr. uh, or Commissioner White, did you have a road out there that you was mentioning? Did I hear you mention one specific road that we haven't discussed before?
No, I, I did, the two chip seals we done earlier is all I've looked at so far. We just...
You're saying they haven't been done yet, but they've been...
They've been approved, yeah.
Those are in the budget.
Yeah, those are in the budget. That's that seventy-seventh road, one hundred and ninety-second street. And then, is the other one one hundred and ninety-six, or is it?
That sounds right.
Yeah.
Tab thirty-eight.
Does that work? Okay, you found it on here?
Yeah, I got it.
The worst road that we have in the entire county right now is County Road one thirty-seven. Aside from ten A, but ten As, like I said, we've been escrowing for that, but...
Any estimates on what it'd cost to do that, or, that's a long road.
Yeah.
And are we just talking about from ninety to the, all the way to White Springs, or?
We're, we're...
Wellburn.
We're not gonna be able to, uh...
You can't chip seal that road.
We're not gonna be able to pave, to fix that road, but what I would like to do is get some funds set aside and go in there and get those bad spots fixed. There's, there's, might be a quarter mile, might be a half a mile of a couple of sections that, 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 when it's got, it's got a foot...
Drop off, as you know.
I, I'm fine with just, the state's gotta help us pave that road, is what I'm saying.
For those projects, we gotta have help.
I could take y'all's whole five million dollars and spend it right there in a little radius, but I'm, I'm perfectly, I'm not happy, but I'm kinda like Commissioner Land. I got to do something with that road, like he's got to make some temporary patches out there on two fifty, I mean, we're just, that's just where we're at.
And I think we all have agreed here today that we have some chip seal projects that need to be accomplished.
Yes.
As well.
Mr. Harris, I need an idea of, uh, what you think it's gonna take to do some patching out there on my road.
If we do the base portion of it, I, I'd set aside at least three hundred thousand dollars for paving.
I was thinking two fifty, but, uh, three hundred is probably, gentlemen, I need three hundred.
Well, we set aside two hundred for County Road two fifty, is it more to do there than there is at...
I think we need to up that a little bit, Ma, to be honest.
It's pretty bad.
Well, I mean...
There's a lot of...
I rode out there, and I've been down it, and I've noticed it, but I didn't really pay attention to how big a stretch that was, that... There's parts of it right there around them dumpsters, when you come into them curves on one thirty-seven, it's, it's bad right there.
Yeah, right, there's, that's gonna be the worst part, we're gonna jump on, that I wanna jump on first.
I mean, I ain't wanting to cut you off, but I'm just, I'm just questioning, if we only spending two hundred thousand on County Road two fifty, do you think it's gonna take that much on one thirty-seven, or are we not put enough in for County Road two fifty, or?
I don't think we put enough in, I honestly, I think we need three hundred in each one of them, is what I think we need, and if we, if we can save a little money, we'll get there, fine, we'll bring it, give it right back to you to come somewhere else.
Hey, I don't have any problem with that, I mean, we all know that everything's going up every day, and my hope is it starts coming back down.
Well, this is repair.
This is road repair, it's not chip seal, we gotta actually cut out bad sections of the road, fix the base and repave it.
How much money we got in the budget for that now?
For?
Road repair, paving, whatever, chip sealing?
We've got some money in there, but that's for our routine, something crazy happens someplace and we have to go in, so I wouldn't touch that. We're trying to fund over and above our regular budget for that.
We're, let's just talk about some, uh, basic things right now, like, I'm talking about this road. Wha, what I wanna do is create a little bit of a list right here, not that we're approving anything right a second, let's talk about some things. Right, get it, and then figure out if we wanna pull the funds or what we wanna do. I'm on a, one thirty-seven, I'm gonna ask for three hundred.
Okay.
Uh, two fifty, I'm gonna ask for a hundred additional.
I'm good with that, I'm good with both of those.
Uh, and we're, Ms. Nina, we're just making notes right now, I'm not, I'm not, uh, wanting to direct you to do anything. Uh...
Uh...
Commissioner Land, you had that one mile stretch of road across there?
That's a hundred and thirty, I had it wrote down somewhere, hundred and... It's right across from...
Three forty-nine?
Yeah, right across three forty-nine, I had it wrote down here somewhere. It's a hundred and, hundred and, uh, fifty-third road, it's straight across from, connects fifty-one to two fifty.
Mr. Harris, can you give me an estimate on that? What do you think a mile of road would cost?
That's gonna have to be paved now.
Correct, that's heavy duty truck traffic.
A mile of road, in today's numbers, it could easily be five hundred thousand.
Oh, Lord.
I need more.
It, it, it's gonna be between five and seven hundred, most likely.
Let's, uh, for, for round numbers, let's do seven fifty for inflation, just making notes.
I understand.
Because what I'm saying is, if we can't get there this time, maybe we can set aside part of the funds, you know what I'm saying? And cut, and get right back to it, uh...
Mr. Chairman, question for Mr. Harris, what about, um, what, what's roughly a mile of chip seal?
I don't know, I can't remember. I've got all of that written down in a file, and I go to it every time I'm running numbers, but we're doing it by the, the yard, so I haven't done it by the mile. It's all priced out by the...
By the yard.
Square yard, so I, I just run the total yards.
Depends on whether you put two coats or three coats.
Yeah, for me, it doesn't matter how long, it could be ten miles long, I'm still gonna do it by the square yard, so I don't know. And it does have to do with double or triple.
You had, what, seven fifty, it's a million?
One point three five.
What, Commissioner Hale, what did you have? You had up, didn't you?
I, I don't necessarily have any roads like asphalt, but chip seal projects, I've got some that would qualify for that.
Let's talk about a number for chip seal projects, if we're bringing the new team on this year, we need to, we need to have funds to do those projects.
Yeah, we got three, three seventy-five in the budget currently, right?
Is that what we got, carryover?
I think it is.
Three seventy-five for those roads.
Those roads, assigned to those roads.
Yeah, that's already in the budgets, what I'm saying, we already got three seventy-five there, in the budget.
But it's already assigned to roads?
Yes.
So we don't have anything for new roads?
Additional.
Yeah, correct.
Anything additional.
Yes, I'm saying we're gonna add some money to that.
Those were the ones that had already been identified and approved by the board, we put three seventy-five in there for those.
That's, that's what I'm saying, but my thoughts are, we, we need a number now that we want to add.
And it ain't gotta be just for money, if we can just come up with something for all of us.
And then, yeah, and then we move forward after today with...
Right.
Uh, but I need, I need you gentlemen to give me a number of what you think that should be. How long will it take?
If you, I was gonna say, if you were to put three hundred thousand in there, that would be plenty, because I've got, uh, there are several things after, we have to obtain equipment, and we've gotta hire some more people.
And we have to, we have to build that three seventy-five that we've already approved, we have to build those roads and have...
They're working on them now.
We're, we're, we're gonna have one crew on that until we can get another crew up and running, that's right, so, that's why I say, if you, if you put six hundred and seventy-five thousand in there, I can't spend that next year.
Even if we bid, entertain, looking at what a contract, contractor might bid it with us providing materials?
We'll bid it out.
Just to see what those numbers would look like, I mean, labor and their, we, we need their labor and their equipment, we provide the rock and everything else, I don't even know what that number would look like, but could we bid one of those roads, just to see what that looks like?
Sure.
Let's, let's add, let's add three hundred, y'all wanna do that?
I'm good.
Well, you're gonna do one hundred and fifty-third, that'd be your road right there.
We're gonna...
Bid it out.
You're gonna bid that for asphalt, though?
That's asphalt.
But you can still get the base price out of that, they're gonna charge you a certain amount for base.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Only difference is between the chip seal and asphalt.
Their, their numbers may be different, though, if they're not gonna do the whole...
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. See, they're gonna program it in based on them finishing.
I got you.
We're doing three hundred thousand, gentlemen, on additional chip seal projects, future. Still just making notes, Ms. Nina.
When do we find out about the scrap and Scott money that, on the roads that we put in already?
It's, it's tough anymore, I mean, we turn lists in, and we never know when they're gonna get back with us anymore. There was a day when I knew within thirty days, years ago, but it's been a long time.
And I will say this, I had a conversation with someone from DOT, and they're struggling to uphold their obligation of already approved projects because of the cost of everything going up. Cause you know, those things were approved at a certain amount five years ago, up to five years ago, so, that's gonna get tricky, I'm telling y'all.
Let's... If y'all would consider entertaining it, on that one hundred and fifty-third road, I'd just soon make the decision right now to, to bid that road out for a contractor to do the base and pave it. Design it, bid it, pave it, we're gonna have too much, we need to stay on chip seal, we're not gonna be able to get all of it.
I understand.
And I, I'm, I totally agree, that road, man, it is, uh...
I think that's what we did, didn't it, seven fifty, we cover all that, is that right?
Well, we just talked about the money for it, but I'm saying...
No, go ahead and bid it out.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We're saying get it on the agenda to get the plan drawn, and...
I got you.
We'll bring a task order in for the design, and then we'll bid it out, the whole thing.
Got you.
So we'll leave the number where it's at right now, but I'm just saying...
Well, I appreciate y'all's support, that road, I mean, it, it just takes a beating with heavy trucks. I mean, I think Mr. Mr. Fleming's sister can attest to that, I mean, she lives on it, it, it just, it's pilgrims pride and log trucks, and, I mean, it just, it just gets pounded. It's a connector road from two fifty to fifty-one, but if we, y'all wanna bid it, I mean, yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be a full project, it's gonna be ditches, it's gonna be everything, it's gonna be side drains, I mean, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a pretty involved project. I, I don't even know if that number will get to it, but...
We can bid and see what it looks like, if we don't touch it, then we...
Well, even if it's a little different, I, I still don't have a problem with, you know, it's, uh, it's one of them roads. Mr. Harris, what are we gonna do on this, uh, on this one thirty-seven and this, if, if we got our crews trying to get this chip seal done? I mean, should we bid these patches out, should we just try to see if we can get some numbers on?
We, we can try, in the past, it was horrible, that's, we did that on forty-nine.
I remember that on forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Two...
Oh, my, it came in real high, so...
Yeah, they tried, tried to take our britches off.
Yeah, we went back.
That's where they gonna make their money at.
Came up with the price, just to do the... See, they don't wanna mobilize for a small project, so your numbers go up astronomi, astronomically on a, you know, per unit price. So, we had to go back and do everything, and then just have them do the paving then, on forty-nine, I mean, there, there's classic case of what happens.
Um, Mr. Chairman? That's, that, where's that seventy-first road drain issue at, that's in the budget, where's that at?
That's a ditch project.
Where, where are we?
Uh, that's Peacock Lake.
Where's that at?
Uh...
Peacock Lake, north.
Are we doing, are we doing that, I was there last year.
We're gonna bid it out, we're gonna have to bid it out.
It's a concrete ditch that drains off the side of the hill and goes down into the...
Followed it to the fallen.
When it rains, it, it's got a creek that feeds it, and it's, uh...
I remember, just, I just remembered it being in there last year, and what, where that was at, or what status that project was, I was just curious.
The specs are being changed back to concrete now, there was an, uh, there was an idea of using a prefab matted concrete product.
That's that part of, can't weed roads?
Concrete are all matted together with steel cable.
You go down there to where you, the first left's available, that you turn, kinda go down...
Goes back to the boat ramp.
Right there.
Where the Hancock's used to live, right past them, that, that drains under.
Right where that Culvert Bridge is.
I don't know what you're talking about, no.
It's, it's a...
Yes.
It's, it's a mess, and it's really, there's really not a perfect solution for it, honestly.
We have already bid it out once with this other product, though, and we didn't get any bids, um, so, now they're going back and redoing the spec on it, should be soon, pretty quick, I mean, quick, finished pretty soon.
I wouldn't get that.
And then we can go back to bid, um, with the concrete.
All right, I was just curious. So... Adding three hundred in addition to the three seventy-five that's already in there, so he'll have six seventy-five to work with, some of which roads are already approved, and that list is here somewhere, tab thirty-eight.
Right.
Um, and then putting out one hundred and fifty-third road to bid, right?
Yes.
Commissioner Hale, you got some chip seal roads, or Commissioner White?
I, I didn't have any that were approved, but now we got some money here.
I got a list as long as your leg.
Oh, I can give you the list, I mean, I've got, I know where all of them are that are bad.
I can spend your five million.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Three more to go with it. If it's this year, next year, whatever, I mean, I just wanna have money there for it, cause there was a couple of years where we had to...
Yeah, didn't do it.
Yeah.
Suspend it. Well, back to what Chairman said, on this patchwork stuff, I mean, that stuff's pretty pressing too, just because of the traffic counts on those roads, those two particular roads, and...
I think make those priority, I agree with that.
Try to get those knocked out due to safety issues, and the, I mean, two fifty, I travel it fairly often, it's got the roller coasters, and one thirty-seven's got the drop offs, so...
So are y'all at the same, just what we're adding up, are y'all at one point four five oh? A million, well, I thought we were at a million, three fifty.
I got...
Million four... Three hundred on one thirty-seven, another hundred for two fifty, and seven hundred and fifty grand for one hundred and fifty-third.
One point one five?
And three hundred for...[1733.62]
And three hundred in addition, too.
I've got a million four hundred and fifty thousand.
That's what I had.
That's adding how much in chip seal?
Three hundred. Three hundred for chip seal, seven fifty for one hundred and fifty-third, one hundred additional for two fifty, three hundred additional for County Road one thirty-seven. Total's a million four fifty.
So, then the three hundred that's in there for chip seal, that's mine and Don's?
I, I was gonna use that on Don's, but if you, if Don wants to share some of that with you.
I'm gonna let y'all argue, but I like it all so far.
No, I'm just playing. The, we, I guess we can determine that, where we're gonna spend that three hundred when we get to it, I guess.
I'm not gonna fight you much over it. I'm just.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, we don't know right now. Let's just put the money in there and.
We got a lot, lot of work to do before we get to figuring out where the next one's at.
No sense in beating that horse now.
Mr. Clyde, what roads, what roads did you have you wanna get done?
Mr. Chairman.
Where them hogs are.
Let me, let me tell you this. I don't have any road. I'm, 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 I'm gonna, my road's gonna be exempt. But, uh, yesterday, this is what I'm asked, that yesterday we had on there two hundred thousand dollars for the Douglas Center escrow. I think we got down to sixty thousand, sixty. If I can get forty thousand, make that a hundred thousand, we'd be good. That'll take care of my road project.
I think they added sixty to it yesterday. It's a hundred and twenty now.
Well, if we get forty.
No.
Yeah.
No, they added sixty to it. It was in the book.
I think we did. I wrote it down.
They added, add another sixty yesterday to the sixty that was in there.
Existing.
And then we talked about Douglas soccer field, whatever.
When we sold the soccer field, he gets his cut out of that, too.
He's have a part development, the, the, the one thirty, one thirty-six.
One thing that we talked about yesterday briefly was the AC in the gym. Uh, just keep that on your radar. I mean, y'all, I don't know what, what you can do, but, um, and we don't, we don't have good numbers. We got ideas, but we haven't discussed that.
What's the idea?
Probably about three hundred thousand. By the time you do installation, blown-in installation and do the AC unit, um, we'd have to get some, run some better numbers.
I don't doubt that. It's just crazy to think that, but it's.
I figured somewhere in that neighborhood.
It don't surprise me.
More. I figured it'd be somewhere in that neighborhood or more because no installation is there.
Right, right. Yeah, and I, I, I'm just reaching. I don't.
Just a pure guess.
Right, I don't, I don't do much of that kinda AC work.
Well, I was just wondering, because y'all did the Coliseum. I was wondering how much that cost.
That was, what, about seven, eight years ago?
I get that. I mean, it gives you.
I, I wasn't involved with that then. We, we just got the opportunity to be involved more recently.
I thought that was all you. Not till recently.
It, it is now.
It always has been.
Million four fifty. If we consider rounding that to a million five and we give my good brother Clyde Fleming fifty thousand for his share of roads, would y'all object to that?
No, sir.
I don't have a problem with it. Okay, we go with it.
Adding fifty to the hundred and twenty.
Right.
We have consensus, but we would like full board support from Commissioner White. We got it.
So, we, we gave sixty to Douglas. Put another fifty with that? All right.
Plus the sixty in there, so that's one seventy, right?
That's correct.
I'm good with that. Write it down.
That's right.
Yeah, well, we'll verify shortly, but we're, we're trying to close in on it. Mr., uh, Bug?
Uh, quick question. Uh, the Douglas Center on the wish list was two hundred thousand. Y'all cut it to sixty thousand? Where's this other sixty thousand that was a hundred?
It's in the budget.
It was carryover.
Okay.
Carryover. I was just going from the wish list and y'all cut to two hundred. Mr. Bug, you're better than that. You're usually telling us. Come on.
So, that's one ten.
Sorry?
I said, and we added fifty back to it, so that's one ten in this year, plus the sixty.
And then as we move forward, it would grow if we can get this other property situated at some point in the future. So, this is just still for discussion, but we're trying to, trying to get it shaped up here. What else, what else, gentlemen, and Mr. Harris, I got a question here. What else do we have to tackle today?
There's one thing that you could consider if you want to make an adjustment. I got a text from, uh, Jennifer over at nine one one about paying for the, uh, a pickup truck out of, uh, the surplus funds over there that the code enforcement officer could use to enforce the posting of the addressing. Because you put, I think we had thirty thousand dollars or something we put in there for that. We're paying for half of it out of that money. And he could work on the enforcement of the addressing that's supposed to be posted on properties as well.
Great idea.
And.
So, what would we need then?
I think part of the salary, half of the salary and half of the truck.
But we already budgeted for that whole thing, didn't we?
We approved it on the wish list.
Yeah, we did it yesterday.
But, but by doing what she said, that allows us to use restricted funds to pay for half of that and we get that.
And the truck.
And the truck, till we get that money back to go into the general, which is unrestricted.
The signs, the nine one one.
I mean, if we can use half of that, those funds that are restricted to specific uses, and if that's allowable, then I'd say you use them for something that's, they're restricted for and then turn around and get that back, or half of it back toward the general or whatever.
I said, that's a great idea in my book.
If, if she's okay, if everybody's okay with that, I mean.
The sheriff said that if we'd buy six trucks for him, he'd enforce the addressing for us.
Well, he's buying them cheaper than we are, man.
So, we would, we would take half the cost of the pickup truck and half of the cost of the code enforcement officer. And.
Was that like thirty, thirty-two?
I had thirty-eight that we did for the new pickup truck.
I'm gonna tell you something. I, I think we need to stick with the truck, because the other is gonna be a recurring expense and I don't think we need to go there. I, I'd leave the labor the way that it is and just stick with half the cost of the truck.
I got you.
Half the cost of the truck?
Only.
I got thirty-eight on the truck, because we went to another five thousand to get it a.
What now? Where you?
On the code enforcement truck, is what I wrote down, thirty-eight on twenty-four eleven, page one, tab two.
Reg truck.
Be code enforcement, code enforcement new pickup truck, thirty-eight thousand.
Code truck, thirty-eight K is what I got.
So, we're gonna back out half of that.
Back out half of that and get half of that back to our contingency.
So.
I got thirty-eight.
This is gonna be something we have consensus of, Miss Nina. So, we're gonna go ahead and do this.
Okay, I did back out thirty-eight for the truck. I just wrote it on here. So, now you're wanting to do half of that, nineteen thousand back to us and give it in.
Nineteen. Bill, half of it, that's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
And that would allow her a vehicle, I mean, code enforcements, neither one of them would be in the vehicle all the time, every day.
Well, the same person would be doing it all. Is that correct? The code enforcement officer.
She would still have to go out from time to time, but I'm gonna leave that car over there and then if she needs a truck to get down a dirt road, she can use that same truck if necessary as well. My hope is the code enforcement officer is out every day. Because we've got.
I wanna see him out every.
We've got a monumental issue out there.
Do you have anything else that, any additional items that we needed to address?
I can't think of anything else. I've been running a list here.
Keith Williams, would you say anything?
Yeah, I'm just curious on the code enforcement part of it, if there's a violation, how, how does that work out, man? That's a serious question. I mean, do prosecutors or?
Magistrate.
magistrate.
The county magistrate doesn't?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they don't pay it then? Then what happens? Just a lien?
Lien.
Well, yeah, it, I've been through it once. I can tell you, uh, it goes back to magistrate about two or three times and then finally a lien.
Just, just curious.
It's a long, drawn-out process. If it was a danger, if it was a danger to someone, the county would go in and clean it up and put a lien against the property.
So, if we were to try to enforce ordinances, we have a county magistrate that we would send that to?
That's correct.
This is really all kind of a learning process for us, because we fixing to try to clean things up a little bit.
Well, I just go up to city, we had, we had a magistrate, then if they didn't comply, then they had to, they had to have a contract with the state attorney to prosecute it, so that's just who we thought.
He was. He was here earlier with the, uh, veteran affairs.
It was in Shutey.
Shutey, thank you. Mr. Shutey, couldn't think of his name. What was that, Ricky?
I was saying, it was the ones that we had to force when I was on the board, pile of letters back and forth.
That's right.
Warning, and then send them this and send them that before it ever got to magistrate.
Yeah.
And then it was a whole process through the magistrate before you ever got a lien.
You got three to six months of letters back and forth and then another three to six months into magistrate.
Well, that's why we're trying to bring someone on, though, to steady.
It's almost a year.
I mean, and it's, it's a process, but, uh, you know, you ask, it's kinda like holding people accountable. I mean, you're gonna ask them to do the right thing.
So.
And not have to go down that road.
Just so I'm square on the paving here. We're a million four fifty. Are we taking, where are we taking that money from?
It's just a list.
Oh, we're just a list. We're not.
Nobody's decided yet.
We're gonna go back and start cutting back.
It's gonna come out of, if we choose to do it, it's gonna come out of cares.
I'm good with that. I was just curious, is we refunding it now or we're just thinking about it?
We're fixing to pull the trigger on it. We'll get consensus in just a minute. We was just trying to get all the.
Well, you're at a million five now with the fifty additional for the Douglas Center.
Yeah, we're at one, we wonder.
I had it under that. Look, you messed it up.
So, that was it? If we took care of that, Mr. Harris, that was it on?
I believe so.
All right, gentlemen, I just, uh, we need to get consensus here. We have these items as far as the road work. We've been talking about that all day. We finally got some, some, uh, ideas and direction of how we wanna go. We're at a million and five hundred thousand dollars. We have five, three, or four in cares. Is it the wishes of the board to take one million five hundred thousand out of there to fund what we're discussing?
I'm good with it. I guess that's where it'll have to come from.
I think that's where it's gotta come.
And it's where it will come from.
I'm good with it. I mean, that's, that, that, roads, roads, roads. We hear it from every constituent at some point or another and we got it. It benefits everybody in every district at some point or another, whether you live in it or drive down it. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm good with it.
So, Miss Nina.
Yes, sir.
We have a new direction for you. We're gonna take one million five hundred thousand out of the cares act.
For these roads that you mentioned and the Douglas Center?
Yes, ma'am. You would add another fifty thousand to the Douglas Center line item. And, Mr. Harris, what line item do we need all this road money under? Or do we need to create a new one?
Well, I had listed, um, the additional chip seal, you've got a line for that. We'd add the three hundred thousand to that line that has three hundred seventy-five in it. And then I would list in the road department budget specifically, one hundred and fifty-third road, at the seven hundred fifty thousand. The two fifty repairs, I think I've got that listed.
There's one in there for.
Already, so you would just add the hundred thousand to the two fifty, uh, road line that's in there. We've got two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two hundred in there, so we just add that to that line. We create a new line for County Road one thirty-seven repairs and put three hundred thousand in that. So, all of that would be in the road department budget.
All right, Miss Nina, you ready?
And then you've got fifty thousand dollars that would be added to the one twenty for the Douglas Center.
We have that.
Which is an eleven-ten department.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. Miss Nina, did you hear that on the three hundred thousand additional going in chip seal? Line item.
Oh, I have that as taping.
Change the three seventy-five to six seventy-five.
I have one thirty-seven as a taping, not a chip seal.
Thirty-seven's a road repair.
It's gonna be a road repair and it's gonna be a new line item.
Yeah, there, there are two items there with three hundred thousand. One of them is one, for one thirty-seven and that's for repairs. The other three hundred thousand dollar item goes with chip seal.
And one fifty-third is a new line?
That's correct. Seven hundred and fifty thousand. New construction. And did you get two fifty adding the extra hundred thousand, County Road two fifty?
Yes, sir.
And with that reduction of one point five million, could you give us our new number for cares funding?
Three million eight oh four, five eighty-six.
Million, what I got?
That's what I got.
And two nine seven, five three two, contingency, is it?
Two nine seven, five three two, because we added nineteen back from half of the code enforcement. So, two thou, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, five thirty-two remaining in contingency.
That's correct.
It's better than the direction we were going.
Do we have the bridges that we're spending fifty thousand on or are we just doing countywide bridge right there?
It was countywide. I don't know if we have a line item for it, do we?
I'm gonna create one, I don't know if y'all wanted to figure out which bridges.
I think it's for.
It's just random.
Right, it's, it's not gonna be for one certain one, so I would just have it, you know. Oh. Do I have any other questions from anyone in the room? Comments? No, Sheriff.
No.
Uh-uh.
No, 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 no.
Uh-uh.
Next. You already got radio here. Come on.
You're jail, man, in the heart.
Quick, just one que, one quick question. I know we're waiting on, what do you call the heart money? I call it the American Rescue Fund. And we're seeing what we could spend it for. And I heard someone made a comment about the cares money. It's kind of more of a, you can use it a little more liberal, as far as what we can.
We don't do liberal.
Or a, a little more free, I guess. I guess, I guess my question, my question will be this here, is that, um, if, if it falls through on the heart fund, is there any way to, some of these items that we talked about the wish list, to, uh, get for the cares money or how do, how do we talk on that?
Was that rain out there? What is that?
I think it's thunder.
I'm trying to change the.
Sheriff, if you're gonna, for me to answer that, you're gonna need to give your gun to Keith Williams. I don't wanna say anything negative to you.
How about this? We'll think about it. We'll get back to you on it.
Sheriff, I would, I would say, I would, seriously.
We're gonna do the best we can, sir.
I would say, I would say yes.
And, and reason, I reason up here, I just, you know, didn't want you to forget us back here in the, in the audience here, you know? And I know you got other things on your mind, but.
Don't your other two employees need to get back to work? They keep nudging you over there. I see them right there.
Thank y'all.
Sheriff, you don't, you don't have to worry about. I'm gonna be having nightmares with that sheriff's budget tonight.
All I can think about is a jail.
You oughta go in there.
That's where he.
The only thing I was grateful was is I could get out.
I thought a boat costs a lot of money, but man, the jail's off the chain.
That.
Mr. Revat, what you got on your mind? You just showed up a day and a half late. Seeing you come flying in here, I wonder where you missed all the action for.
I thought we'd done something wrong.
We've got other business stuff that we're trying to take care of.
We were saving money.
Yeah, that's right.
We've been a lot of hours here.
True story.
Oh.
We done?
Okay. We are.
Keith, y'all good? Everything good with you guys?
Yeah. Miss Nina, you have any questions for us?
No, I just have to get a decision on the art before the candidates, so we're not all scrambling around it that night. It'd be easier if we were ready to give us.
I'll reach out to them today. Yeah, I'm gonna.
Well, that's next weekend, then. No?
No.
Weekend. We just had one, so.
Yeah, I'll be on the phone with them right away. They should put us at the top of the list, as much money as we've been spending.
Ain't no doubt.
No kidding. We made their budget.
Yeah, so they should be able to get right back with us.
Valentine's Day, we should receive a card.
Well, boys, I need to go, go to work, make money.
Gentlemen, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I will say, I appreciate everybody, all the efforts. Appreciate our county offices. Appreciate all our sheriff. I say I appreciate the sheriff. That is expensive appreciation. But no, I appreciate everybody and their efforts to try to help us get where we need to be. It's, uh, tough going. Grateful we did have a few funds this year that we're able to share with folks and, uh.
Yes.
Let me ask a quick question. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. And now I'm going on memory. What did we ever decide on the generator, the, the big generator, the three hundred thousand?
Hundred thousand a year for three years.
Okay.
I think that's what we put in there.
All right.
So, at this time, all I need is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner White?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.